All right, everyone. Hello. Thank you. I know we have a full house here, but we'd like to begin with our meeting. So, thank you. Welcome, everyone. All right. We are reconvening from closed session, and I'd like to make the following disclosure. By a 5-0 vote, the City Council authorized and directed the City Attorney's Office to defend the cases of Oak Grove Apartments versus the City of Elk Grove and Gezal Kabir versus Mosek as identified by the case number listed on the City Council agenda. With that, we will adjourn the special meeting at 6:12 PM. And we are moving over to our regular City Council meeting. I'd like to call the regular City Council meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, October 26, 2022. It is 6:12 PM. Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. This meeting of the Elk Grove City Council will be replayed on Metro Cable Channel 14 on Friday, October 28 at 1 PM and Tuesday, November 1 at 9 AM. His being closed caption will be webcast at SACMetroCable.TV. City Council meeting videos are also archived on the city's website at ElkGroveCity.org. For members of the participating audience who may have personal electronic devices, please place them on silent mode during the meeting or on mute when you are not speaking. The Elk Grove City Council welcomes, appreciates, and encourages participation in the City Council meeting. City Council requests that you limit your presentation to three minutes per person so that all present will have time to participate. City Council reserves the right to reasonably limit the total time for public comment on any particular Notice Agenda item as it may deem necessary. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2010-24, no individual speaker concerning public comment may address the City Council for more than three minutes. If you wish to address the Council during the meeting, please complete a blue speaker card, which can be found at the back of the chamber, and provide it to Assistant City Clerk Brenda Hagard prior to consideration of the agenda item. Just as a bit of housekeeping for folks, what I would note is that tonight, we have a full house. And so, what I would ask from our participating audience is that when we have folks seated, we will be proceeding through the agenda. And for folks that are here for particular agenda items, we thank you for being here this evening, and you do not have to stay for the -- it's not required to have full attendance for the meeting. So, after your item goes, you are permitted to leave the chamber, just like anyone can. But that'll free up some spots. What we do have is one of our items does have in attendance our fire department, and our fire marshal is watching. And he would like us to be aware that we keep the doorways inside of this -- of the chamber and also the exits to the building open and free of folks. What we do have is some overflow seating. The broadcast should be heard by all of our folks out in the hallway. There are seats out there, but you should be able to see the monitors and hear our audio. What we'd also ask is that for any folks that are lined up against the walls, that as we take public speakers, if you can, be aware of your surroundings for when we have folks that may be approaching from the hallway and they're proceeding to make their way up to our speaker podium in order to address the City Council this evening. Thank you all for your cooperation. With that, Mayor, I'll move on to the roll call, and I will start with Councilmember Nguyen.
Here.
Councilmember Spees.
Present.
Councilmember Hume.
Here.
Vice Mayor Suon.
Here.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Here. All right. Next up, we have our Pledge of Allegiance, and I would like to invite our young, talented resident, Neil Nayar, to lead us in our pledge this evening. Neil, please join us. You can lead us in the pledge. Yes.
I pledge to comply of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, ungodly, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Neil. All right. At this time, we'll observe a brief moment of silence, please. Thank you. For approval of the agenda, I would like to move Item 9.2 to come before 9.1 so that our Executive Director doesn't have to wait through the entire meeting.
And Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers, for Item 4.1 this evening, there's a scheduling conflict with Congressman Amubera, so that item -- we'll be scheduling that for a future date.
For a future item. All right. So, with those changes, can I get an approval, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next up, closed session.
And there are no closed-session items on the regular agenda, which will advance us to Section 4, our Presentations and Announcements. And again, Item 4.1 will be scheduled for a future date, which will take us to Item 4.2, which is a proclamation recognizing October 2022 as Hindu Heritage Month.
Excellent. I would like to call up Dr. Bhavan Parikh and all of our Hindu brothers and sisters that are with us this evening. And what I will do, and I believe, Neil, you have a performance.
Yes.
Okay. So, I'll let you go ahead and start, and then I'll read our proclamation. Neil Nayar, one of our prodigies. He plays over 100 instruments and a proud resident of Elk Grove. Thank you for blessing us.
And on the Jennifer Hudson Show.
Yes. He's become famous now, so thank you for making time for your community, Neil. He was on the Jennifer Hudson Show earlier today, I believe, so congratulations. I would like to call up Dr. Bhavan Parikh, and if the rest of our Hindus, brothers and sisters can join us. And I will read to you the proclamation for Hindu Heritage Month, October 2022. Hinduism is the third-largest religion in the world, with more than 1 billion followers worldwide, including several millions in the United States. And whereas the City of Elk Grove is home to a vibrant Hindu community, and the Hindu heritage, culture, traditions, and values have enriched our diversity; and whereas Hindu-Americans have made significant contributions across all fields, including science, education, medicine, law, politics, business, culture, sports, and war. Whereas Hindus strive to achieve Dharma, which is a code of living that emphasizes good conduct and morality; and whereas during the month of October, the Hindu community across the state of California and across the nation will collectively celebrate Hindu heritage; whereas Hindu Heritage Month provides an opportunity to focus on Hindu culture and its diverse spiritual traditions rooted in India, which are practiced in many parts of the world, now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Elk Grove hereby affirms and proclaims October 2022 as Hindu Heritage Month in the City of Elk Grove and extends greetings and best wishes to all citizens for observing Hindu heritage during the month of October and the Diwali 2022 Festival of Lights activities and events. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'd like to welcome Dr. Bhavan Parikh, who's a member of our Diversity and Inclusion Commission, to say a few words, and then we will come down and present this to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council members, for this wonderful recognition. That meant a lot to us. We really appreciate from bottom of our heart. As you know, this City of Elk Grove welcomes all. We welcome people from all walks of life, and we have said clearly that Elk Grove has no place to -- place for the hate. So, we -- because of its cultural diversity, many of us have made this place as our home. We have raised, and a lot of us are raising our kids here, and they become very productive and good citizens of our city. And as you know, Hindu-Americans are contributing a lot to our local workforce, economic growth, prosperity. And we have many, many members who volunteer in our -- in our community. We have a lot of women empowerment, great women leaders, Monica, Shipti. I mean, they do a lot of women help in forums, children development, youth development programs. And we believe in giving back to our community. You know, we have volunteered during California Fire, when Fire, you know, affected many victims. So, we collected food items close and donated to people in Yuba City and other areas. Even during a horrible dam, you know, the tragedy, we collected necessary items and donated to victims. And during COVID pandemic, many of us have gone to local seniors. We knocked their doors, checked them out. We brought the groceries to their doors, and we wanted to make sure that they are okay. So, we are very proud of our community work. We believe in the basic principles of serving, which is our SEWA, Community Services. We strongly believe that, and that's what we want to, you know, give back, you know, give that culture and tradition to our young youth and kids. We have wonderful youth here. You know, Om is a Youth Commissioner for City of Elk Grove. We have Neil, who's a multi-talented musician, and he's becoming a big celebrity nowadays. So, that shows how dedicated they are, and they always are making our city very proud. So, last but not least, there is a Sanskrit word called Vasudevam Kutumbam, Kutungamam, meaning Vasudev means earth, Eva means ease, and Kutumbam means family. So, we believe that the world is one united family. That's our philosophy. That's our culture and tradition, and we will continue to serve, give back to our city, and we are very proud where we are living right now here in City of Elk Grove. So, thank you so much for your recognition, our recognition and proclamation. It meant a lot to us.
Thank you. All right. So, we're going to come down.
And happy Diwali to all of you.
Happy New Year, too.
We'll come down there, although is there a way to move this little podium? Yeah, if we can get that so that we can get the photo from this angle, because I don't think that everyone's going to fit otherwise.
We come here?
Yeah, we can stay -- we'll stay here, and I'll come down, just to try to accommodate everybody.
Just keep those entrances and exits clear.
How are you?
Yes. Is it? Is that right? Happy New Year. Happy New Year. Thank you. Happy Diwali.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
What's going on, Om? How are you? Good. Hi. Good to see you.
Good to see you on Saturday, too.
We have everybody shuffled a little more this way.
Good to see you.
So, we're all going to look right there about this camera. Can we get those folks maybe over this way, because I'm getting the podium in the picture. Thank you.
Everyone looking right here. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. And then I think I've got other phones. By the podium with this one, and then I've got another one over there. Okay. I'm not getting everybody in here. One, two, three. One more. Okay.
That's fine. I'll just have somebody take you.
Are you sure?
Yeah.
Well, if we could share this.
Let's do it one more time. Ready? One, two, three.
Thank you. Happy Diwali.
Yes.
Happy Diwali.
Thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, that's all.
Happy Diwali.
Hi, my friend.
Nice to see you.
And we are still celebrating Diwali, which is the Festival of Lights, and it's really
a celebration of light over darkness. And so, I extend those wishes to you, because as an Indian American, I also celebrate Diwali. So, happy Diwali to everyone. Thank you. Next up, we have Item 4.3, the proclamation recognizing October 2022 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. Presenting will be Councilmember Nguyen.
Thank you, ma'am. And I am not going to read the entire proclamation, but I will read all of the important parts of this. And it's actually some great information. We do this every year, but it's always great for us to refresh our memory behind this and that one in eight women in the U.S. and one in 833 men will develop invasive breast cancer in their lifetime. And that black women have a 41% higher death rate from breast cancer than white women, and breast cancer is the leading cause of cancer death in the Hispanic women in the United States. You've all heard of this foundation and this organization, Albe Aware Breast Cancer Foundation, which was founded in 2004 in the memory of Alberta Albi Carson, who died of breast cancer. And the only way, men and women, that you can find out and treat is if you do early detection. And we encourage you to self-check, but also go get this checked out often, as often as you can or as often as needed. But Albe Aware is committed to supporting those who are facing breast cancer, and that on September 30, a free mammogram screening was held here in the Elk Grove City Council chambers. And during the month of October, with pink bold ribbons, pink patches, we proudly display in the community, family and friends and neighbors stand in solidarity with breast cancer survivors and reaffirm our commitment to raising awareness in this issue. And before us is Mr. Doug Carson, who is husband to Albi Carson, and I don't see Courtney Quinn. Is she here?
Courtney couldn't make it. She's actually teaching a birth health class.
Wonderful. So, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Carson, and the floor is yours to make some comments if you will. You've got a full room here, so this is a great data to see this.
Well, thank you very much. This is -- recognition is wonderful for our foundation. In the last 18 years, we have been providing free diagnostic testing. And that's the reason why I founded it in 2004, was Albi was not being diagnosed or she was not offered testing because insurance companies weren't authorizing it. And so, what we do is that we pay for all diagnostic testing, whether the insurance company says you can have it, or if you don't have insurance, we are going to pay for it. It's so important that you -- you mentioned it already, you've got screening. And we also have the mobile mammogram units that go into the communities, and the one time that it broke down and went into the repair shop, you opened up your chamber and let us come in with the unit, and people came in here and registered and were able to get their free test. Early detection, like you mentioned, is so, so important, because you -- if 2%, if you are early detection, you -- 2% is about the only problem that you have. It is almost curable, and so, you need to get in and do it quickly. We just ran into somebody today. We were at another function, and they said, "I've been trying to get my mammogram, and I just keep forgetting to go." We don't want you to forget. We need you to go and make that appointment. But more importantly than the free testing, Albe Aware is helping you navigate the medical system. The word cancer can be so fearful, and the people get scared and they kind of close up. So, by contacting Albe Aware, even if you have the insurance, even if you did your testing, we help you navigate that system and kind of take that fear out of it, making sure that you're getting proper testing at the right times and making sure you get second opinions if you do. Too many people fall through the cracks. So, if you know of anyone that has breast cancer problems in their family, they need to contact us, especially if you are a younger woman and you have a family history, and the insurance company says, "No, please call us. We are going to get that test for you," because you need to get in. Too many young women are dying today because they're young and they're not authorized to get a mammogram. So, again, thank you so much for this recognition, and again, thank you for opening up your chambers. That was very, very helpful.
And can I just add that I know so many of us, when you hear breast cancer, you just think it's a woman, right? It's a women's issue. And while it is one in eight, it is also one in 833 men, and I don't think very many men are educated enough to either check themselves or get the early detection, because as you said earlier, it is curable, but it's only curable if you are able to detect it early. And I love that you're a man. You're up here advocating for it, right? And I think we need to educate many of our men who don't think that this would ever impact them or.
No, please. Thank you for bringing that up. Just two years ago, we had a gentleman that we recognized because he had a cyst on his side. It bothered him. So, he went to his doctor, and he says, "Doc, you know, you knew the guy." He said, "This thing is really bothering me over here. Can you take a look at it?" And the doctor, "Come on, Jim. It's just a cyst. Don't worry about it." So, time goes by, and he goes back in, and he says, "You know, this is really bothering me." Again, he was fluffed off. The third time, he says, "Look, I need something done, and I don't like what's going on." So, they did a test. He reluctantly said, "Okay, I'll authorize a mammogram for you." It came back as cancer. But not only did it come back as cancer, it was stage four. Stage four is so -- I mean, that is when you're really in deep trouble. And so, he went through a two-year battle. He's not completely out of the woods. It's been five years, but he's alive, but he's still very fearful that it might still come back. It's not right to be refused a test. And I get so emotional about it, because losing my wife just was very hurtful, and I don't want other men to go through that, and women who are going to -- like this Jim's wife is just beside herself. So, we need to continue to do more about making people aware, and that's why we called it Albe Aware. We want everyone to be aware of this is happening, and we need early detection. Please get tested. Please call us. So, thank you very, very much.
So, I'll come down there and present this. You signed by the entire council.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Next is our recognition of Harry Nguyen for attaining the rank of Eagle Scout, and Vice Mayor Darin Soon will help present that to Harry Nguyen. Harry.
Thank you, Mayor. Harry, come on up, please. It's so good to see you again, young man.
Hi.
Hi. I want to thank you first for coming down here and allowing us the opportunity to present this to you properly. We were at your Eagle Scout court, and we didn't have this ready for you then. So, thank you for making accommodations to us and affording us this opportunity. You know, Harry, you're doing, instead of being in like my son and playing video games in his room all day, you spent your time doing a lot of other things, being trustworthy, loyal, friendly, and helpful. And we couldn't be more proud of you in achieving this milestone as an Eagle Scout. You know, with this, I don't know if people realize, you're joining the likes of Steven Spielberg, Bill Gates, Neil Armstrong, and you're one-half of 1% of everybody here in America. So, congratulations to you. We're very proud of you. Can't wait to see what you do next. Would you like to say something? And we'll come down and join you for a picture, if you don't mind.
I actually don't have anything to say, really.
Okay. No worries. Congratulations. Come on. We'll come on down.
You got the best applause for not having anything to say.
Yeah, right. Everybody's favorite speaker so far.
Fellow Nguyen, huh?
Yeah.
We'll take mine real quick and then get this wrapped up. All right. Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Thank you. This one.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well done, young man. Next up is our Diversity and Inclusion Commission Annual Update. Welcome, commissioners.
Good evening. My name is Jessica Carter. I'm the Chair of the Diversity and Inclusion Commission, and with me today, I have Tina Levo, the Vice Chair, and our Commissioner Bhavan Parikh. I will be providing you with the annual update, and I just have to remember to change the slides as I'm talking. So, I'm just going to talk about some of our accomplishments this year. The Commission was originally established July 10, 2019. We switched from being a multicultural committee over to an official commission, and our responsibilities are education and promotion, to serve as a resource to the city, to serve as ambassadors and engage the community, provide council feedback, and provide recommendations and information to the City Council. And we've participated in two trainings with Circle Up Education this year to help us meet these goals that we have. And I didn't change the slide right after I said I was going to. Nice. Off to a good start. Okay. So, we -- this is our Diversity and Inclusion Commission. There are 10 commissioners that serve on this commission, and the proclamations that we've supported this year are Juneteenth, Pride Month, and Diversity Awareness Month. The Commission recommended changes to the city flag policy to display the Pragueist Pride Flag at City Hall during the month of June for Pride Month, which the council adopted on May 25, 2022, and we held a pride flag raising event in front of City Hall on June 1, 2022, which was one of our biggest accomplishments this year. We also had our very first Cultural Connections honoring Juneteenth, our second Cultural Connection event that we've held, and it was a speaker series held on June 16, featuring local speakers, and we had vocal and dance performances. An estimated 300 people attended the event. We supported Diversity Dining Week, which was August 19 through the 28th of this year again, and it was in collaboration with Exploral Grove. We had 18 participating restaurants, 2,418 local passholders, 288 signups, 99 redemptions and check-ins, and the most visited restaurants were Huckleberry's, Pho Bistro, and Journey to the Dumpling. We had some other Diversity Month events as well. We attended the Neighbor Good Market for two of their markets in August to help promote our upcoming multicultural festival that month, and there was also the 15th Annual Women's Festival. And this year was a big year for us as well because of the multicultural festival returning. We had moved to smaller events due to the pandemic and put it on hold, so this year we brought it back, and we held it for our first time at District 56 before we had it at Elk Grove Regional Park, and it was a huge success. It's a celebration of diversity and learning combined with food, music, dance, art, fashion, and fun. And a quick festival recap, I will not read everything to you that's on here, but we had many vendors, we had city staff, sponsors, and the city channels that we use to promote the event were through websites, social media, Instagram, so on. We had Sufa boards, automobile boards, everything you could think of, and had an amazing turnout, more than 7,500 people. And the media that we had supporting us were ABC 10, iHeartRadio, K-Love, Univision, and Elk Grove Citizen. Looking ahead for the 2023 year, we are currently working on a land acknowledgement so that we can acknowledge the Native American land that we hold our meetings on. And then we're also working with the Youth Commission. We have a Youth Commission liaison who should hopefully be starting with us soon, and part of that is because we want to work with the other commissions in Elk Grove and start building those connections, because there are -- diversity is everywhere. So, we think it's important to start establishing that and seeing what we can partner with other groups on to continue to make the city welcome to all. And. And in our next meeting, we will be working on our 2023 priorities. And that concludes the annual update, short and sweet. Thank you for your time.
Excellent. Excellent job. Any questions, comments for my colleagues? I'll start to the left here. Councilmember Hume?
Not a comment on the presentation, but it's the first time I've seen Tina to say congratulations on your new position with the city.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your service. It looks like it's been a busy year and it's nice to see everybody gathering again. Look forward to more events.
Thank you. Councilmember Spies?
I just wanted to say thank you. And, you know, there've been a lot of good, very important accomplishments that have been made over the last year as a result with diversity and inclusion. And so I thank you for, for being, leading the charge in those. So thank you.
Councilmember Nguyen?
Just real quick, I think my favorite events will be the ones, the storytelling events. I thought the Hispanic one and the Black history one was superb, done superb. I really, really enjoyed those. They were small. I heard you say they were not as well. I mean, 300 is a pretty good amount, but I thought they were done very classy, very informative, lots of history behind it. I think a lot of people learned a lot at both of those. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you so much. They were a labor of love and we were really pleased to see the outcome. Thank you.
And thank you all for your service. I think I see Jace if my, back there. Hi, Jace. It was an honor to speak before the Commission. I don't know, was it last month? My days all sort of blend together sometimes. And just engaging with you and hearing more about your vision. And what I love about this Commission most is its true diversity. And one of the things that I think I'm most proud of that we saw here reflected was the raising of the pride flag. Because I met several families that really reflected of how meaningful it was for them. And, and a few of them, their remarks stay with me because one gentleman was, was bawling and said, I never thought that I would see this in the city of Elk Grove. So thank you all for your service and particularly as you look at different policies, it's great to have that diversity of thought reflected in the work that you do. So thank you and congratulations. Thank you, Jace.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'd like to close by recognizing something. One of our members, Jinky Dohler, was actually recognized today in the Sacramento Bee as one of the top 25 AAPI changemakers. So I just wanted to make sure to give a shout out to Jinky because she's one of our members and she really is representing that diversity to the next level. So thank you.
Thank you. And congratulations to Jinky and all of you for your service. All right. Next up, we have our new hire introductions. Our department heads will come. Yes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council, Jason Berman, your City Manager. That's why I always love this, these meetings where we get to introduce our new staff. We have a lot of new staff and promotions we want to introduce to you. Our staff have been really busy, so you'll notice a lot of individuals lined up here, but just a wonderfully talented and diverse staff that we're happy to present to you. So we're going to start with our Police Department Chief Davis.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. As you can see, we have, we have been a little bit busy. You know, I'd say we're very blessed to have our hiring and background process, working with our city staff, our HR department has made a significant dent in the vacancies that we have, and you can see that here today. So I'll get into that because we could be here all night if I start, start talking. So first, you guys want to just, just start over here and then work your way this way? So we have Stephen Ng. He's a Community Services Officer. Matthew Miller. Hi, Matthew. He's Animal Services. We have Derek Baraga from, he's one of our police officers. We have Brandon Crane, Briann Moats. Oops, sorry. Everybody line them up here. Yeah, sorry. Going over there. Stephen. And I will talk a little bit after as soon as I get everybody up here, but I want to, I want to get everybody up here first. See, it's a big group. All right, Cal. We have Cal Saifong. We have Cavita Salvato De Rocha, Jonathan Gallenstein. Where am I at here? Sean McPherson. I got a lot. Still got, still got a list. Anthony Robinson, Lily Steyer, Brandy Velardi, Mary Comfort, Christian Juarez, Jacob Lorgan. Are you here, Jacob?
Please raise your hands like you guys are doing so we can see.
Yep. Kimberly Wasserman, Joshua Magdaleno, Nick Range, Janelle Boykren, and I think that's where we stop, right? So as you can see, and I wanted them all to be here to, to show or highlight the, not just the work that our city has done to get the Police Department staff where it, really where we are, we're going to be ahead, to be quite honest, and serve in our community. But I wanted you to see the diversity in this group, the work, you know, directly to DE and I, and what we talk about in our city and what's important. That's what's behind you. We've had people who come in fresh, brand new, and we have people who've come from other cities. I think they see the value in our city and the city of Elk Grove, what we mean to our community and what they mean to us. And on top of that, the diversity. And I think that this represents that. And this represents our efforts to be, to be ahead of the game when it comes to representing who we are in the city of Elk Grove. I am very proud to work with all of these people and I want to thank all of you for coming here and being a part of this organization and part of this city and what it means to us and the future of this city and this organization. So thank you very much. Thank you for being new employees and thanks for showing up tonight. We appreciate it very much. So thank you.
Welcome, everyone, particularly those new to Elk Grove. You will love our city.
And congratulations to all you who were promoted.
Yes. Great job.
That's the biggest group, but we do have a few other departments here.
Yes.
So Melissa Rojas, our HR Director, is going to introduce her new employees.
We have been busy in Human Resources, as you can see, but I'm so excited to introduce our newest member of the department, Maria. Come on up here. Come on up here. We have just one here, so you can be right here next to me. Maria Delvilar Reyes. As a first in her family to attend college, Maria earned a bachelor's degree in business with a concentration in Human Resources from the University of Pacific. While in school, Maria was an active member and organizer of Mecha, which is an organization that promotes higher education and unity within the Chicano movement, as well as creating workshops and events to promote diversity and inclusion. Most recently, Maria worked for the San Joaquin County District Attorney's Office as an office assistant. Maria is studying, currently studying French. She enjoys going to concerts, finding new hobbies, and we are so happy to have her join the team.
Welcome.
Next, we have our Public Works Department Director, Jeff Warner.
Good evening. Happy to introduce you to Juan Zuniga. He's a Senior Civil Engineer in our Construction Management Section. Juan comes to us from the private sector where he recently served two years with Coastland Civil Engineering, working here at the city of Elk Grove as a contract employee. We're very happy to have him as a member of our team now. Juan's engineering experience is very broad. He has experience doing highway design, sweepy inspections, construction management, land development, entitlement and design, and flood plan management. He is a UC Davis alumni. Go Aggies. Lives in the North Bay and enjoys vintage cars. Happy to have you, Juan.
Welcome.
And finally, our Finance Department Director, Matt Pollan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have two, one hire and one promotion to announce to you. Jenny Tala is our newest customer service rep. She was part of the first graduating class of Franklin High School in 2005. She briefly moved to Sacramento but came back to Elk Grove in 2013 to put down roots and start a family. She worked for the Cordova Rec and Park District for 10 years, starting as a part-time front desk clerk, then a full-time admin assistant, and finally as a recreation coordinator prior to coming to Elk Grove. I also introduced Christina Scott to you at our last new hire meeting just a few months ago, but she's so wonderful that she was promoted to Senior Customer Service Specialist in August. She's worked in customer service for over 20 years, with the majority of those years spent in the hospitality industry. She derives great satisfaction from interacting with people and making new connections. She's excited to have the opportunity to further her professional knowledge as a Senior Customer Service Specialist while continuing to enjoy Elk Grove where she has resided since 2015. Thank you.
Yeah. Welcome. Congratulations.
Congratulations to all our new hires and promotions.
Yeah, please.
Jenny, Jenny, just a second. Could you come back up here for a second?
No.
Uh-oh.
We're spheres.
Not at all. You know, first of all, again, congratulations and welcome, but the work that we all do up here, and I know all of us take great pride in this, is, you are the example of that. Coming back to the community after being raised here. And, you know, this is why we do our work. And it just makes me so happy, you know, to, to see that, you know, now you're coming here and raising your own family. So we appreciate that so much. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. All right. Next up, we have public comment, and these are for non-agenda items. So if you signed up for public comment on an agenda item, we ask that you address the council at that time. So, and the time limit is three minutes. And I'm going to call up Margie Jones, followed by Bob Turner. Margie, are you here?
They may just be out in the foyer, so we'll see. Margie Jones and Strauss Festival representatives, here they come.
We're outside.
Excellent.
Okay.
And thank you for all of our attendees in the audience, and I appreciate it. I was out in the foyer and everybody's being very respectful of the space and keeping those entryways clear and free so that we can get folks in, but here comes another mob in front of the council.
Okay. Excellent. All right.
We were holding down the fort outside, since it's a busy night.
Yes.
Well, this is the Board of Directors of the Strauss Festival of Elk Grove, and we're here this evening to thank you all once again for the wonderful support that we receive from the city of Elk Grove. We so appreciate you being able to attend the event, our Waltzing Wonderland in July '22, but we also appreciate the in-kind support and we loved having the police services there with us this year, in addition, trash services, and of course, the financial support you give us. So because of the support that you give us, we continue to be able to have Iris Zimmerman's dream of being free to the public continue to happen. So we just want to say thank you. We have a plaque for you. And this is all of our board members. So thank you very much.
It's great to see you all.
Thank you.
Well, I'd just like to say that I know we've departed a little bit from the original dream of being purely a Strauss celebration, but I thought this year's presentation had the highest production value, the most creativity in how it was presented. And I just really, kudos to all of you for, for such a wonderful show and welcome back.
Yes.
Well, it's great to have all the volunteers that are willing to give hours upon hours of their time to this production, and we enjoy it as much as everybody else. So thank you all for your support.
It was great. Thank you. Should we come down?
Yes, if you would. Or somebody, I don't care, whatever you want to do. We'll let you guys decide.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. So we'll have you come this way and then someone will get a photo. Yes. You have to get it too. What is happening? Come on up. Get in, get in. Okay, so who's taking the photo?
Thanks, Bobby. I didn't bring my phone down.
There you go.
Bobby.
Thank you.
All right. Jay, you ready?
Ready.
All right, everybody say cheese. All right, I want to hear some smiles on those faces.
All right, let's go.
Say cheeseburgers.
Thank you, everyone. One more?
One more. One more.
All right, everybody say Elk Grove is the best.
Elk Grove is the best.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Oh, okay. There you go.
I know, I know. Okay, one, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Great to see you all.
It's good to see you too.
Thank you for all your support.
Oh, you bet. You bet.
Thank you.
All right. So our next speaker is Bob Turner, followed by Jonathan Mills. And as a reminder, these are non-agenda items.
Good evening, once again. I'm back, as you can tell. What I'm here for though is to thank everyone. I live on Paul Hemus Drive and back in June, when they had all this construction with Frontier, everything turned out to be a mess. So in the future, we had a meeting with Kristin Parsons, who's the Deputy Public Works Director, and her associates, which was Dennis, I'm sorry, I don't know his last name, and Shabi at my residence on Paul Hemus. And it was projected that possibly that we could have our street repaved within a year instead of two years. Well, fortunately, it occurred on the 10th of October of this month. I just let Kristin know we appreciate it and the neighbors love the street and it's nice and paved and it's sealing up real good. I just wanted to let everybody else know that we appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Great to hear.
Mr. Turner? Mr. Turner?
Yes.
I just wanted to let you know, I wanted to thank you. A lot of times, staff gets criticism. It's, it's part of government, right? It's what happens. And that's, and that's what it's for. It's okay. But thank you for coming back.
Yes.
And thank you for recognizing the efforts that they put in because it doesn't happen very often. And so I really appreciate you coming back and, and letting them know. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
My pleasure.
All right.
Hi there. I hope I can come back one day in the same way that guy did.
Jonathan, and then the next, after Jonathan is Rachel Garcia.
Okay. So I'm here to talk about Zeus. I'm sure you're all aware of the case. There is a, there's a problem that isn't, that involves the Elk Grove code and the forms that you use when you determine when a dog should be killed. That code is used to reject a appeal that was put in to the city of Elk Grove. What I'm here to really talk about is that one does not equal two. We have a notice rejecting an appeal here from the city of Elk Grove that says in it that the administrative appeal decision, appeals hearing officer, the appeals, appeals, appeals throughout the whole thing. The family only had one hearing. The family did not have a hearing and an appeal hearing. There was just one. And what that leads to is Suzanne Kennedy, the city attorney, misapplying the city code in a way that takes away due process for, for a family here and leads, hopefully not, but it could lead to killing an animal, a dog, a beloved companion. So I'm here to speak just about the, this misapplication of code that takes away what should be an appeal. And if you look through this, you can tell that it's, it's wrong just by, by, by reading it. Notice rejecting appeal requests, administrative hearing decision and order. And then you look through here, it says administrative appeal decision. Now, this is what has confused judges from the state court to the federal court. I think the family has six actions now against the city. City spent probably $200,000 in legal fees to try to kill this dog. A German, one-year-old German Shepherd. And, and that's, that's crazy to me, but what it really comes down to is this misapplication. This is where it all started. When the family went to ask for their appeal, because it's a real, that's the due process right is to write to an appeal of, of a decision from a city hired hearing officer, not a judge. This is an appeal from a judge. This is a city hired appeals officer or a hearing officer. See, I even get confused because this is what Suzanne Kennedy applied and said in open court to a Superior Court Judge, saying that, no, 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 they had their appeal. This is now the final decision. But that never happened. There was no first hearing. It was just the appeal. So if you go look and look through the code, I know that Mr. Hobbs here and Suzanne Kennedy, who I don't see tonight, will may try to confuse you because they're wrong, but they're, they are wrong. And it's, it's throughout all of the documents you have. If you look at the back of the citation that Fairel Kabir was issued, if you look at the back of it, you'll see the same issues, appeals, and then one says hearing and then one says appeals. If I go to traffic court and on the back of it, it says, I have a right to a hearing. It doesn't say a right to an appeal. So that's what I'd like to point out you to, to you tonight. And I- is to write to an appeal of a decision from a city-hired hearing officer, not a judge. This is an appeal from a judge. This is a city-hired appeals officer or a hearing officer. See, I even get confused, because this is what Suzanne Kennedy applied and said in open court to a superior court judge, saying that, no, no, no. They had their appeal. This is now the final decision. But that never happened. There was no first hearing. It was just the appeal. So if you go look and look through the code, I know that Mr. Hobbs here and Suzanne Kennedy, who I don't see tonight, will may try to confuse you because they're wrong. But they are wrong. And it's throughout all of the documents you have. If you look at the back of the citation that Fariel Kabir was issued, if you look at the back of it, you'll see the same issues, appeals. And then one says hearing, and then one says appeals. If I go to traffic court, and on the back of it, it says, I have a right to a hearing. It doesn't say a right to an appeal. So that's what I'd like to point out to you tonight. And I pray that you see the same mistake that everybody else, 12 attorneys we've talked to, see also.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Rachel Garcia, followed by Ruby Lopez.
I'm not used to speaking out like this in front of a lot of people. My name is Rachel Garcia, retired senior. This is my daughter. She's been with me through all of this. Zeus, and my dog Peanut, it was taken away from me four months ago because he fell off her lap. And these people that came and got him, Crystal and...
Supervisor.
The supervisor, Alicia. I've been through hell. I'm gonna tell you, I don't cuss that much. But I've been through hell. They put me through hell, through lies. I had to get to see my dog. They kept sending me back and forth to the DA's office. The DA said, no, we don't take cases like this. But I'm here for Zeus right now, that we want him to, let him, please. Give him, let him have life. Let him be trained. He deserves life. Please.
Next up is Ruby Lopez, followed by Ed Owen.
My name is Ruby Lopez. I'm here. Thank you, everybody, for letting me stand here. I've been a witness. I experienced my parents, my senior parents, with the officer, Crystal Mesak, where she's put my parents through hell and back, excuse me. I feel that this job that she has, she doesn't have heart. She's came, stalked my mom and my father, my family. She has still very racist remarks to my mom and dad. Women of color. I'm standing here because, I'm nervous, that this officer should not be at the shelter. Because...
Please order in the gallery, please. Let the speakers speak so we can hear them without interruption. Thank you.
I've dealt with the discrimination with Crystal, with my parents. And I plead, please, we cannot have an officer like this at the shelter. And please let Zeus live. His life matters. Dogs' lives matter. Please, I beg you guys. Thank you.[774.33][774.33][applause]
Next up is Ed Owen, followed by Linda Parr Macaluso.
It's been a while since I've been here.
Are you a stranger?
You guys still here? I haven't moved on, huh? Okay. It's coming soon. It's coming soon. I've got an important issue. It's been brought up for many, many times. And this concerns the dedicated drainage easement adjacent to my property located at 8690 Mecca Road. The dedicated easement adjacent to my property has not been maintained by the city. Last year, Elk Grove had five inches of rain about this time of year, and the drainage ditch overflowed and flooded my property. Additionally, the water that should have been going down the drainage ditch, backed up, came down the driveway, got to my house, got to my garage. There was so much water coming down that the perimeter drainage around my home could not flow out into the back. So we got the results. The drainage ditches overflowed, water poured down the driveway of our home. We had to create sandbags out of burlap sacks because we didn't have any sand or bags. And we used sump pumps to keep the water away from our home, as you can see in the photos. Let me tell you, our property is not a retention pond for the city of Elk Grove. So I've heard all the excuses about, well, we don't have this, we don't have that, we can't do that. But I'm not a retention pond. You can buy it and make it one. So we ask again for the city of Elk Grove to do its job. Our rural community relies on this infrastructure to be properly maintained. We need the city's operations and maintenance division to clear out the drain ditch directly adjacent to our property and continuing ditches and easements beyond. I provided a parcel map showing the drainage ditches adjacent to our property, the rear of adjacent property, and over to Mosher's, which has been a big issue. However, we've spoke to Mayor Singh Allen directly. My wife has. We talked to Jason, the city manager. Ron Falk was there yesterday. He's Elk Grove Operation and Maintenance Manager. We walked the property. I showed him where the issues were and how he could bring in city crews across my property and get into the drainage ditch to clean it out. So that's not an excuse. Additionally, we secured a written document from the property owners.
Sir.
So you can now go to Mosher's property.
Sir, your time is up.
Excuse me?
Your time is up, sir.
I know it's up.
Yeah. So we'll have, can one of our staff members please follow up? Thank you so much.
I need to follow up.
I appreciate it.
Before the rains come.
Yes. Thank you, sir.
Like this week.[1005.01][1005.01][laughing]
Next up is Linda.[1008.93][1008.93][applause] All right. Thank you. Linda Parr Macaluso, followed by Amy McErvin.
Thank you for getting my name right.
Thank you.
I truly appreciate it. Thank you for letting me speak once again. As you know, I'm here about Zeus.
Can you come a little closer? We can't really hear you.
Oh. Is this okay if I touch it? Last time it broke.
Yeah, yeah. Just to make sure it's close to your mouth. Thank you.
Sorry. Thanks. As you know, I'm here about Zeus. And when he was at his home, he had toys, treats, cuddlies, dogs, park visits, positive stimulation. He's been confined to a cement cage with little to no human interaction. He eats, drinks in the same place he goes to the bathroom. How gross is that? He was trained to go to the bathroom outside. It's my understanding that Zeus was left and is still left in his harness. This is very shameful. With the shortage of medical staff at the animal shelter, I am extremely concerned that he could have wounds from the harness that have been left. I feel it is very important at this point to have him evaluated by a vet, maybe not one that's within the facility, because you guys are short on those. I have an answer for that. So it is, sorry. It doesn't appear that Zeus has any toys. He doesn't have treats. He can't visit with his owners. Can you please allow Zeus to have visits from his owners, toys, treats, so he can have some positive stimulation and lower his stressors? There has been a lot of negative publicity about Zeus going to the cage door. I think it's obvious why he's doing this. He doesn't understand what's going on, why he's there. He is scared and wants to go back to his old life, statistically showing that nearly 4.5 million people are bitten by a dog each year. One out of five of those bitten will require urgent medical assistance based on the severity. Let's be honest, nothing Zeus has done has been severe. On a positive note, dogs can be rehabilitated. President Biden's dog bit a Secret Service agent twice. There was no discussion about that dog needing to be euthanized. He was allowed to be rehomed. The shelter is unable to give Zeus a fair and unbiased behavioral evaluation, especially in his current circumstances. People, businesses, sanctuaries, and rescues have all reached out to you, offering to pay rehabilitation and relocation for Zeus. Where are we and Zeus with that? I personally have emailed and left messages, but haven't heard anything back, except for my friend over here, Jason. Thank you so much. The shelter, let's see. Sorry. And so I personally wanted you to know that I reached out to the police department and offered to pay for the gentleman's pants.[1219.62][1219.62][laughing] I am respectfully requesting that you pardon Zeus.
Ma'am, your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Amy McErvin.[1231.75][1231.75][applause]
I did this last time. Hi. My name is Amy McErvin. I've lived in Elk Grove for 24 years. I fostered for Front Street Animal Shelter downtown. I wound up adopting both of my dogs. I never knew how much I could love a dog until we adopted. They are the most loyal, loving, and affectionate animals. So my dogs are like my kids, so much so that my kids get jealous. That's what kind of family members they are. I'm sure you all know Zeus and his story, how he was taken illegally before the deadline. Anyone that has seen the body cam footage of the animal control officer, she mentions five or six times that the deadline is 5:00 p.m. They got there before Fariel was even home from work, harassing her father, who's in his 70s. I'm sorry. This is, this makes me very emotional. Zeus was taken illegally from his owner, his home, everything he knows. He's been in the Elk Grove Animal Shelter for almost four months, neglected, ignored, and treated worse than we treat inmates in our local jails. I've visited the Elk Grove Animal Shelter several times. They're stepping in their own feces. The dogs there, several cages, there's feces piled in their cages, and they're stepping in it, right by their food bowls. Do you know that criminals get toilets? They get hot meals? Freedom outside, exercise, and human companionship? None of which Zeus has been allowed. He was in his harness for three months. Three months. A growing puppy in his harness for three months before an employee cut it off. Do you know that dogs have the mind of a toddler when it comes to emotional intelligence, vocabulary, and cognitive development? Researchers have proven that canines can experience basic emotions, including joy, fear, love, sadness, and anger. Could you imagine locking up your own dog or your child, letting him use the floor of his cage for a toilet, pooping next to his food bowl? It's inhumane. Something is wrong with our city. This is where our tax dollars are going. This is what we're paying for, for the Elk Grove Animal Shelter to abuse and mistreat animals. Why can't Zeus go home? He's been offered by several people to take him, rehabilitate him, trainers, rescues, and he's still there. Four months. Four months in a cage. Can you imagine? I'm sure everyone in this room has a dog or a child. It's unimaginable. It's an outrage. I've never been so disappointed. Thank you.[1403.26][1403.26][applause]
Thank you for your comments. All right. That is our last speaker for public comment. So we will move on to our next item, which is our General Administration Information Report from the City Manager.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of the City Council. A few items to report on this evening. Earlier this year, the city and the Sacramento County Public Library Authority applied for a competitive state grant to remodel the former Rite Aid building at the corner of Elk Grove Boulevard and Waterman Road in the city's historic district to become the new home for the Elk Grove Library. City staff received word last week that the project has been awarded approximately $4.4 million. This funding, combined with the $3 million secured by Assembly Member Cooper, brings the project much closer to realization. So we're planning on updating the project cost estimates, bringing that back to you for consideration as part of the mid-year budget update. We'll have more updates for you at that time. I also want to share some great news with the council with some recent awards from our amazing public affairs team. From the series that they put together, the Get to Know You video series captured a first-place epic award by the California Association of Public Information Officials. And the documentary highlighting the women-led Old Town Plaza Revitalization Project earned a 2022 first-place Savvy Award from the City-County Communications Marketing Associations. You can view these videos on the city's YouTube channel. Also excited this year is the trunk-or-treat celebration, also called Hallopalooza, at Old Town Plaza this Friday evening from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Community is invited to come down. It's being hosted and sponsored by our wonderful police department and Explore Elk Grove. There's going to be lots of fun, including face painting, decorating, pet costume contest, and all-ages costume parade. Right now, we have over 1,100 residents who have signed up to come down and participate. Speaking of Halloween, city just received word that it is ranked the number 14 city in the United States best place to celebrate Halloween. That was according to Smart Asset. So great place to celebrate this holiday. Also, the city, Explore Elk Grove, and Elk Grove Chamber of Commerce have teamed up to encourage local shopping. Over this coming holiday season, the Why Buy Local Holiday Campaign kicks off next week with print, in-store, and digital promotions that support Elk Grove businesses. The campaign combines Elk Grove Local Pass and e-Gift card programs to offer exclusive deals and discounts for Elk Grove holiday shoppers. Look for the special Why Buy Local window cling of participating businesses and others, and consider taking advantage of special buy-one-get-one gift card deals online. You can visit elkrovelocalpass.com to learn more. The Public Works Department has launched a series of surveys to our community to learn more about local transportation trouble spots. Residents are encouraged to provide their input on walking, biking, and traffic conditions in Elk Grove through the online surveys available on the city's website through Friday, November 4. Feedback will be considered in the development of the next capital improvement project. More information is available on the city's website. Also, housing and public services staff are working with the developer of the gardens at Quell Run 2 to launch a lottery for 107 new affordable housing units scheduled to open early 2023. The project is located on Quell Run Lane near Bruceville Road. One, two, and three-bedroom units will be available for qualifying households. Rents will range from approximately $500 to $2,000 a month, depending on the unit size and income level. Lottery interest forms will be available from the city's website starting tomorrow, October 27. The entry period will remain open through November 10. Some restrictions apply. Entries are limited to one per household, and details are also available on the city's website. Just a final reminder about the South American Sub Basin Groundwater Sustainability Agencies will host a groundwater workshop. That's tomorrow, October 27, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. at the Barn Cafe. And finally, the police department and our recycling and waste division will team up for a national prescription drug take-back drop-off event this Saturday, October 29, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the police department. This one-day event provides an opportunity for residents to dispose of unwanted and unused prescription drugs free of charge. Please visit the city's website for more details. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions the council might have.
All right. Thank you for that report and update. Any questions or comments for our city manager? Seeing and hearing none, we'll move on to our next item. Thank you. Our next item is our consent calendar. I'd like to open up the public comment opportunity for items on the consent calendar. I do not see anybody signed up, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion to approve our consent calendar.
Motion to move.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, next up, our public hearing, item 8.1.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Brian Fringer, building official for Development Services. I don't have a formal presentation for you this evening. However, the item before you today is a tri-annual code adoption for the building codes. The building codes consist of 10 parts from Title 24 Code of Regulations, and every three years, they are adopted by state agencies like the Building Standards Commission and the Housing Community Development. The codes are then adopted by local agencies and are amendable if the agencies deem appropriate. The consideration for amending Title 16 of the Elk Grove Municipal Code does not propose any local amendments. However, as we have included CCSD fire code standards for consideration, there are some local amendments that are being proposed. Staff's recommendation is to adopt the codes to clearly demonstrate to our community which codes are enforced and to provide enforcement tool needed for a safe community. This concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Additionally, questions related to the fire ordinance, Chief Ray from CCSD Fire is here to assist.
All right, thank you. I'll declare the public hearing now open and open up the public comment opportunity. I do not see anybody signed up to speak, so I'll close the public comment opportunity and look for a motion unless you have questions.
Nobody wants to read it, huh?
Go for it, councilmember.
Introduce and waive the full reading by substitution of title only and ordinance amending certain sections of the Title 16 of the Elk Grove Municipal Code relating to business and construction, adopting Elk Grove Municipal Codes Chapter 16.5 relating to the California Energy Code, ratifying adoption by the Consumnis Community Service District of the 2002 California Fire Code with local amendments, and amending Chapter 17.04 relating to the California Fire Code to adopt by reference the 2022 California Fire Code with local amendments, sequitur exempt.
All right, we have a first motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. So we are going to 9.2, which is receive and file the Elk Grove Tourism Marketing District annual report for fiscal year 2021-22.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers. Kristin Lawrence is the city's public affairs manager. My team and I create events and experiences that support the city council's goal of creating a vibrant community and a stable economy with diverse businesses, amenities, and experiences that support Elk Grove's quality of life. Our work complements the efforts of other organizations like Explore Elk Grove, the administrators of Elk Grove's Tourism and Marketing District, or TMD. The city council established the Tourism and Marketing District by resolution in 2015, and a memorandum of understanding and cooperative agreement between the city and Visit Elk Grove designates Visit Elk Grove, who does business, as Explore Elk Grove, as the administrators for the TMD. Visit Elk Grove's Board of Directors is currently comprised of up to six hotel representatives and one city representative. Earlier this year, I was appointed to join the Visit Elk Grove Board following the departure of our former Economic Development Program Manager, Rachel Brown. Rachel served as the board chair and a guiding force in the organization for several years, and I'm sure I speak for Daryl and our leadership team when I say we truly appreciated Rachel's contributions to the organization. I'm extremely honored to serve on the board and support Erin and the Explore Elk Grove staff in their effort to market and promote Elk Grove as a place to play, stay, and celebrate. Erin and her team have been doing big, exciting things over the past year. Under state law, Visit Elk Grove must prepare and share an annual report to the governing legislative body, in this case, that's the Elk Grove City Council. In her first opportunity to present their annual report in person to the city council, please join me in welcoming Explore Elk Grove's executive director, Erin Vell.
Good evening. On behalf of our Board of Directors and my team, we thank you for your time today. As the official tourism marketing agency for the city of Elk Grove, we truly value your time, your support, and trust. Let me click. Tourism is a vital industry for our community and plays a key role in community development. Our board is made up of six hoteliers, who are directors, and four advisors, including representation from CSD, McConnell Estates Winery, Wilton Rancheria, and Cafe Elk Grove. We support our seven hotels, hundreds of hospitality partners, and the community through communications, public relations, sponsorships, business referrals, media platforms, and sales efforts to elevate our city as a great place to live, work, play, and do business. Small steps lead to great achievements, and we continue to drive results in economic growth. As revolt events roll back into town, we proactively secured, supported, and serviced tournaments, conferences, meetings, and events. 2021 and '22 saw an abbreviated year for events. A few estimated key results include welcoming 14,000 athletes and attendees to this town, direct business sales of $3 million, and 1,700 jobs supported. Overall, we have surpassed pre-pandemic hotel occupancy and revenue levels and continue to see an increase in demand this year. We saw a 9% increase in average hotel occupancy, a 15% increase in average daily rate, and a 48% increase in guest room revenue. That's a total of $26.8 million generated by overnight visits. This past year, our marketing and public relations partnership development and special event efforts resulted in exposure for the Explore Elk Grove brand, city of Elk Grove, and stakeholders. Total website traffic increased by 129% year over year. We distributed 24 newsletters and announcements with a total distribution of 54,000. Our reach and engagement continues to grow through social media as well. Our Facebook followers increased by 23% and Instagram by 37%. Creating moments of impressive size and scale is always top of mind for our team at Explore Elk Grove. Through special events, storytelling, our experience passes, and leveraging partnerships, we were able to do just that. A few campaigns included our Beer and Wine Trail Pass, Elk Grove Restaurant Week, Diversity Dining, Explore's Elk Grove VIP Pass for convention and meeting and sports attendees, and the Why Buy Local program in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and the city of Elk Grove. Through these campaigns, we earned 144 pieces of media coverage, which resulted in 3.9 million views. We also delivered free 360 tours to 25 local venues, hotels, parks, and partners in town. These tours gained 400,000 Google views. Last year was a full year of firsts. We curated the first annual uncorked and uncapped event at Old Town Plaza, partnered with the city on Why Buy Local, and launched quarterly hospitality meetups. We hosted an industry update luncheon in December and a tourism brunch this summer. On top of that, we introduced our new brand and website at Explore Elk Grove. We encourage residents and visitors alike to explore the new site and our brand today. Our team looks forward to what's ahead and continuing to be a key partner in economic development for our partners and city. We thank you and appreciate your support.
So this is just a receive and file, but I wanted to thank Erin for that excellent report. And, you know, as someone who sits on the Visit California statewide board, I know the value and the work that you do at the local level as you drive those invaluable tourism dollars to our city. So it's great to see this sort of robust site and really showcasing all of the great things that our city is doing. So congratulations to you and your team for all of your great work. Any comments from colleagues?
Quickly, Mayor, thank you. I just want to also say, Erin, you and your team have done fantastic work, you know, working through COVID and everything, and it's great to see these events again and always, you've always got a surprise and very creative in what you and your team do. So thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Excellent work. All right, well, thank you for that. So we're going to go back to item 9.1, which is, does the clerk want to read the full thing, or?
To get it started, we are at item 9.1, which is to receive information from staff and consider a resolution approving a community workforce and training agreement with the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council and the AFL-CIO Council and its member unions and other actions to authorize the city manager to execute the agreement.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. I'm Jeff Warner, your Public Works Director. As the clerk mentioned, the item before you this evening is a consideration of an Elk Grove Community Workforce Training Agreement, or CWTA. First, a little background about how we arrived at this point. Since 2013, various requests have been made by the city council to consider workforce development opportunities for Elk Grove. In February 2014, the Public Works Department updated our pre-qualification criteria for public works capital projects. This pre-qualification language was modeled after the Department of Industrial Relations' pre-qualification language. However, we added an emphasis on participation in joint or union apprenticeship training committee programs. In May of 2018, the city council formed the Career Pathways and Youth Workforce Development Ad Hoc Committee. The purpose of the committee was to consider additional changes to the pre-qualification criteria and explore options to enhance workforce development opportunities for the city of Elk Grove residents. Throughout 2018 through 2022, through the COVID pandemic and those four years, discussions with stakeholders, the committee held discussions with stakeholders along with staff, including the Sacramento Sierra Building Construction Trades Council, the Association of General Contractors, and the Allied Building and Contractors, as well as other various union and non-union contractors. A lot of contractors in there. The focus of those discussions and what was explored was additional pre-qualification requirements, contract language requiring workforce development, local hire goals, and employee health benefits, and a community workforce and training agreement was also proposed. Again, four years later, in September 2022, we finally arrived on agreement on terms of an Elk Grove CWTA. So what is a CWTA? Well, it's an agreement with one or more labor organizations that establishes the terms and conditions of employment on a construction project or projects. The other side of this agreement, the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council, or SSBCTC, represents more than 15,000 union construction workers in Sacramento, Amador, El Dorado, Nevada, Placer, Sierra, and Yolo Counties. It's also defined as the local area when we add San Joaquin County, as that term is defined in the agreement. There are 19 signatory unions to the CWTA listed here for reference. Key provisions of the Elk Grove CWTA include, first and foremost, it will apply only to projects that are estimated at $1 million or more. It will not apply to maintenance work, and maintenance work is work that we normally conduct in-house. This includes street and bridge repairs, primarily street ceiling is a big exclusion of the agreement, as well as drainage work and landscaping work that we perform on a regular basis, again, in-house. The agreement has a five-year term with no termination clause. It promotes efficient construction operations by prohibiting strikes, work stoppages, and lockouts. It requires an expedited dispute resolution process, which again facilitates the prohibition of strikes and work stoppages. It does not require contractors and employees to join a union, although it does require all contractors to make employer contributions to union trust funds on behalf of all employees. It allows non-union contractors up to five core employees. It prioritizes hiring of Elk Grove and local area residents by establishing a local hire goal of at least 50%. And it supports employment opportunities for military veterans, emancipated youth, women, former offenders, and other persons receiving public assistance. Those are primarily provided through the helmets participation and reference to the Helmets to Hardats program, which establishes a database of veterans who are interested in employment with the trades. It requires an annual community career fair, and it requires the trades to develop a more detailed workforce development plan submitted to the city. This is something that we negotiated with them. We felt that the requirements in there were a little light, and so we wanted them to come with a more robust plan for further developing the workforce development here in the city. Quick summary of how it will apply to city projects. Again, the big one here is that it will apply to projects that are estimated to cost more than $1 million. It doesn't apply to maintenance work, as I described. There are 10 to 15 projects currently in our capital program that are estimated to be above or near $1 million. A big one of note is the 8380 and 8400, 83400 being this building, 8380 being the building next door. We have major tenant improvements planned to accommodate the chief and all his staff that he was introducing to you tonight, and many more to come. And then various transportation and drainage projects, which is the bulk of what we do as your Public Works Department. It will not apply to state or federally funded projects, as those, the requirements for receiving those funds typically preclude application of a CWTA, or the requirements for disadvantaged business enterprise goals, et cetera, as a condition of those funds make it very onerous and/or confusing for bidders, as well as staff, to really administer those projects. So if it's a condition of funding to not apply the CWTA, it will not be applied. It's important to note that the number of projects could increase or decrease depending on projects that receive grant awards in the future. Cost increases and/or inflation would add projects to the list if their estimates became more than $1 million in the future, and then, as well as adding new projects. We add projects to our CIP. It's updated annually, and new projects are added on a regular basis, sometimes exceeding $1 million. Excuse me. There are some anticipated potential fiscal impacts, including increased costs due to additional work for staff, as well as the contractors, and tracking, reporting, and verifying worker and business qualifications, meeting of the goals of the agreement, the required employer contributions to union trust funds for non-union core employees is another one that could potentially increase bids. The additional construction management costs to, again, attend meetings, coordinate with contractors and unions regarding compliance with the CWTA. It requires at least monthly meetings, as well as various monitoring and tracking. And then potential delays are anticipated in the beginning of construction while we work to execute the agreement to be bound and accepting the provisions of the CWTA in general. Staff will monitor bid results to make sure that the trends in pricing and number of bidders are not detrimental to the city. A major focus of our negotiations was ensuring a deep bidder pool and good bid prices continue to be had here in the city. If necessary, the city reserves its rights to rebid projects. If the bids come in higher than our budgets, or if the bidder pool wasn't sufficient, in our opinion, we reserve the right to rebid. That's at your discretion, and staff will come with recommendations if necessary. And then, we, again, through our negotiations, we, both sides agreed that if needed, we would meet and confer to try and improve bid results. There's an interest on both sides to make sure that the bid results are good, and this has value and benefit to both sides going forward. So the consideration, again, before you is to adopt the resolution of a community workforce training agreement with SSBCTC and authorize the city manager to execute said agreement. With that, I'm available for questions and direction.
All right, thank you for your staff reports. I think we'll hear from our public comments first, and then any subsequent follow-up questions. So before I get to our public speaking notices, just as a set of ground rules, please respect everyone that is speaking, whether you agree or disagree. You've all spent time to come here and come to this meeting to share your opinions, and it's important for us to hear all of you. And just please hold those applause, or, you know, no cheering and jeering, and give all due respect to every single speaker that comes up, please. And if you hear some of your comments already mentioned by previous speakers, please feel free to, you know, mention that you agree with so-and-so, so that we can really manage the time efficiently. We have about 30-plus already signed up, so thank you. I know that this is a very important subject matter for all of you. We haven't seen crowds like this in quite some time. So with that, we'll go ahead and start. Our first speaker is Richard Marcusen, followed by Richard Bartaci, and if I butcher your name, I apologize in advance.
No, you did a great job, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Councilmembers, Richard Marcusen. I'm here tonight representing the Western Electrical Contractors Association, the Plumbing, Heating, Cooling Contractors of California, the Independent Roofing Contractors of California, and the Sacramento chapter of the American Fire Sprinkler Association. It's rather ironic, I think, that the first half of the meeting tonight was the celebration of inclusion, but with the adoption of this project labor agreement, you're shutting the door on 85% of the construction industry that works without a collective bargaining agreement. Now, your staff has done a job of saying that anybody has the opportunity to work, but the truth is, project labor agreements were designed at the outset to keep non-signatory contractors from bidding on your projects, which is the reason that they're the only ones subject to the project labor agreement that your staff has negotiated. These terms do not apply to signatory contractors. A yes vote tonight on this project labor agreement. I refuse to adopt the community workforce and training agreement. It's a project labor agreement. It means that for the next five years, on the covered projects that the city is pursuing, you're agreeing to a no-bid you're agreeing to a no-bid contract for construction labor. You are excluding 85% of the marketplace, and this should be rejected. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Richard Bertacci, Bertaki?
Perfect.
Followed by John Hershey. Which one? The first version?
Bertacci.
Bertacci, very good.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. Again, my name is Richard Bertacci. I'm a resident, 30-year resident of Elk Grove, not the city of Elk Grove, I've been quite 30, and very proud of this city. My wife is a teacher in this city. My daughter's a teacher in this city, and absolutely love it. I'm a member of Local 447 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters. I can't tell you what this means, especially the 50% local hire, where you're keeping the money in our, in our city, that people can live here, they spend their money here, they buy groceries here, they pay their taxes. It's just, it's a win-win. I just, I can't, I can't urge you enough to vote in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Can we please, thank you. There's going to be a lot of enthusiasm regardless of what side you're on, so please, if we can minimize the claps or jeers. John Hershey, then next up is Ben Liu. Liu?
All right. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the Elk Grove City Council. My name is John Hershey, and I'm here this evening on behalf of the UA Local 447 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Labor Management Cooperation Committee, as our compliance officer, who is tasked with ensuring high standards are being followed and met in the plumbing and pipe fitting industry. I want to state that public works projects are never exempt from prevailing wage requirements and tend to have higher standards and scrutiny that are statutory. There's effectively zero difference in labor costs on projects that would be covered by this CWTA, assuming that everyone is following the law. One thing that is certain is that union contractors do follow the law and are continually subject to auditing by both our respective unions and by the state. The Department of Industrial Relations allows for exemption of some reporting requirements on CWTAs and PLAs, in part because mechanisms will already be in place for resolving wage disputes. The same cannot always be said when labor is not represented by a union. In just the past year, I have unfortunately seen that non-union workers on prevailing wage projects have been misclassified, retaliated against for raising concerns, and have not been paid their full due wages and fringes for work performed, which are required by law. This is what can make a non-union and non-CWTA work cheaper. I respectfully ask that you vote in favor of adopting a CWTA to help provide good, stable careers for Elk Grove residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Ben Liu, followed by Osman Gamalis.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Ben Liu. I'm an Elk Grove resident and a proud member of the UA Local 447 Brotherhood. CWTA projects are how I got started in my apprenticeship, and I fully successfully completed. I worked many projects, of those included were Golden One Center and the Sky River Casino, which was built two months ahead of schedule. Adopting the CWTA for future projects allows members such as myself, other men and women of construction trades to work locally. This enables us to work close to home, so we can spend more time with our families. Union workers are highly trained and highly skilled, and this is beneficial not only for our union workers, but for local businesses in Elk Grove. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Osman Gamalis, followed by Lindsay Fitzgerald.
Dear Elk Grove City Council, I am here tonight as a plumber and pipe fitter of Local 447, member who is an Elk Grove resident and a strong supporter of the CWTA that is on the agenda tonight. This item will not only allow local residents an opportunity of a career pathway into the construction trades, but for some, it will offer a life-changing experience. As most of you know, a portion of the CWTAs to increase employment opportunities for workers who are local area residents, to provide construction career training and employment opportunities for the city of Elk Grove's at-risk youth, military veterans, women, and other disadvantaged residents through local apprenticeship and pre-apprenticeship programs. I am a veteran who's been given an opportunity through the UA's Veteran in Piping Program, and I'm here to tell you what a great benefit it is to have an organization like the Plumbers and Pipe Fitters to assist individuals like myself on the transition from the military service to the civilian world. This program has not only allowed me to make a career transition by giving me training at almost no cost, but has given me top-notch medical benefits and a pension that I can count on at the end of the road. With the top wage that I earn, it has allowed me to purchase a home in my community that I was born and raised in after serving time for our country in the military. In closing, I appreciate your time and wish you that you give strong consideration on approving the CWTA that is in front of you tonight. I am sure there are a lot of individuals in this community, just like myself, who will benefit from this agreement.
Thank you. Next up is Lindsay Fitzgerald, followed by Nicole Garing.
Thank you, everyone, for being respectful for every speaker.
Hi, my name's Lindsay Fitzgerald, and I am a fourth-year apprentice with ABC NorCal. What this agreement doesn't say is that we can all have an equal opportunity to work. All these fine young men that just spoke, they're with the unions, and everything that they said is correct, except for it excludes non-union apprenticeship programs. And I have worked in this area for the past four years. I currently have a job at Sheldon High School. Now, if this agreement is adopted, I don't know if that'll stay on our books, if we won't get it. I do know that our page of prevailing wage jobs, the list of them that we had were out of, an entire page long. Now, since the City of Sacramento has adopted this same agreement, we're down to 10. We're not asking to exclude anybody, but that's what this agreement says. It excludes apprenticeship programs that are non-union to be able to work here. I believe that everyone should be able to have an equal opportunity to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Nicole Garing, followed by Eric Christian.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the Elk Grove City Council. Nicole Garing with Associated Builders and Contractors Northern California. I've been doing this job for 16 years, advocating for fair and open competition for everyone in the construction industry, union and non-union general contractors hire union and non-union subcontractors on the job in the current bidding process that you have now. What you will do is you'll exclude all of the non-union subcontractors, all of their workforces, from being able to work on projects, unless they decide that they want to only use the five of their core workforce, which the rest, you have to hire them on an alternating basis, the first person from the hall, and then your own, up to five. It's very risky. You don't know what the talent pool is that you're going to get on your projects. Those workers were then going to lose their pensions into the union trust fund, so that's money that they'll never receive, so they could be losing $20 per hour on a job, on a 300-hour job. That adds up quite a bit. This is an agreement not with the community, this is an agreement with the AFL-CIO. So if that is the agreement that you want for your city, that is the agreement that is in place. You heard before, merit shop apprentices, which there are thousands in this community, are going to be excluded from being able to work on projects. All they want to do is get their career going and build their community. Some notable projects, merit shop contractors in the region have done Doco, the Sophia, the SMUD Museum of Science and Curiosity, the Elk Grove Community Center, the Kasuma CSD Rebuild Project. These are all projects that everyone should have the opportunity to be able to do. So I urge you to reject this agreement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Nicole. Next up is Eric Christian, followed by Stephen Deckler.
Good evening, councilmembers. Eric Christian, Executive Director of the Coalition for Fair Employment in Construction. We were started in Sacramento 24 years ago by union and non-union construction firms, solely to oppose discriminatory and exclusionary project labor agreements. It's good to see you all again. It's been a few years. We've been hiding from each other, but it's good to see you. I'm actually also unhappy to see you, because we're having to do this tonight. And we had a portion of the meeting dedicated to diversity and inclusion the whole first hour or so of the meeting, and yet your first action item is something that seeks to exclude and discriminate against the 85% of the construction workforce that chooses to wake up on a daily basis, according to the Bureau of Labor Statistics, and work union-free. Those are the numbers, that's the reality. Eight of your top 10 largest electrical contractors in this region are non-union. Your largest mechanical contractor is non-union. These are the people who will not be bidding your work if this PLA, as it's currently constructed, goes forward. So there is hope. The record inflation that we're experiencing at the macro level, we talk about every day, we see it at the gas station, we see it when we purchase food, but in the construction industry, it's never been seen before at the micro level. We had never seen it in the construction industry. What you're doing here today is putting that at risk for making it even worse by reducing the people who bid your work. Look what's happened to the City of Sacramento. It was so bad in the City of Sacramento, they actually had to change their project labor agreement and exclude slurry seal and paving, because they weren't getting any bidders, because all of those bidders also happen to be non-union. That's how bad their PLA is working out for them. Why is the only city in the entire region that signed on to this Sacramento? Why is the only school district Sacramento unified? These aren't popular, they don't work, they're unnecessary, they're a solution in search of a problem. Item 9.1 says the local area is Sacramento plus eight surrounding counties. Whether or not that's really local, it has a goal of 50%. But what I haven't heard is what is your current local hire number? I'd like that question asked of staff. What are your current local hire numbers? Is this actually lowering what you're currently achieving? Because if it's Sacramento and the eight surrounding counties, I guarantee you, you are already exceeding 50% local hire on your jobs. You should ask that question. Section or Article 9.4 deals with core workers. Why would you have a local, non-union contractor being reduced to not using any of their employees but for five? Why would that even be in here? Why would that have been negotiated? Why would you limit a Helix Electric that employs thousands of electricians to only using five of their workers? That doesn't make any sense. That does nothing to do with building a project and everything to do with making that non-union contractor don't want to bid your work. Article 11, benefits. All the benefits have to be paid to the union. That's wage theft. Those workers will never vest, five to 10 years to vest, you're never going to get that money from the unions. Why would that be part of this? Change two of the provisions dealing with core workforce and the money following the worker, and you'll get everybody bidding your work. That's all you need to do. Change those provisions, everyone can bid it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Stephen Decker, followed by Kit Wilson.
Most has already been said. The training, the, we have college programs, we get college credit for our five years of training. Our kids that would not be able to go to college are now able to get a degree and go into the trades, fully paid for the full five years. They come out with the best and most up-to-date training. I myself have been in this for 24 years now. I live in this community, have the whole time. We are coaches, we are mentors. Like, like's already been mentioned, a lot of our wives work for the school district. We are deeply rooted in this community, it's very important. And the rest has already been covered. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, did you say where you're from?
Yeah.
Old Town Elk Grove.
I mean, who are you representing?
Yeah, are you for?
Local 447.
Okay, thank you. Wasn't sure who you were saying, I agree.
Sorry, I'm not a very good public speaker.
Thank you. It's okay, you did great. All right. Next up is Kit Wilson, followed by Robert Cooks.
Hi, my name's Kit Wilson. I am 47-year resident of Elk Grove and 25-year member of Local 447. The training and skills that I've had have helped me in my 23-year career coaching Elk Grove High Football, mentoring kids, trying to recruit them too into our trades. So I urge you to support and approve the CWTA.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Cooks, followed by Anthony Viscuso.
All right, here we go. Picture time. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Robert Cooks with the She-Metal Workers Union. I'm also a combat veteran, having served two tours in Iraq and Afghanistan in the United States Marine Corps. I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak with you on behalf of the hard-working, skilled-and-trained construction workers in your community. I'm speaking today in support of the Community Workforce Training Agreement. This agreement will benefit all the construction workers, both on the projects and in the shops, and help them earn a living wage all the time when working on projects funded by your city. In having this agreement, it will increase the number of job opportunities and apprenticeships for the young adults in the community. I am a testimony to how this program can provide a successful middle-class lifestyle. The opposition you will hear from today will say they can't bid on these projects because of this agreement. It's simply not true. It is illegal, it is illegal to restrict responsible contractors from bidding on projects. They are choosing not to bid on the projects with these agreements, because they don't want to pay a decent living wage for the workers under their employment. We are here to support the workers, their families, veterans, women who want to be in the construction industry, and everyone who wants to be in the construction trades. We think that construction workers should be making the prevailing wage all the time. Non-union contractors do not pay prevailing wage on every project like union contractors do. The same scopes of work, but on private work, the non-union contractors pay at a lesser rate to construction workers on those projects. How is that benefiting the workers? How is that benefiting your community? In this agreement, there's language to support the local workers first. There's language to help those in need into the apprenticeship programs. There's more for the construction community and families of Elk Grove. I'd like to have everyone here, if I could, stand if you're in support of this agreement and would like to see the city council vote in favor. That's awesome. Thank you very much. I urge you to vote yes for the CWTA, and I appreciate your time, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cooks. Next up is, please, let's, please restrain on claps and jeers and cheers. Next up is Anthony Viscuso, followed by Robert Fong.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Anthony Viscuso, and I'm a business agent for the Heat &amp; Frost Insulators Local 16. We represent over 700 members, many of whom live here, live in Sacramento County, as well as right here in the City of Elk Grove. We also represent non-union construction workers by examining their job sites for wage theft, unfair labor practices, and mistreatment of workers. Unions exist to improve the lives of workers everywhere. When unions negotiate higher wages and benefits, non-union contractors are forced to follow suit. We believe that every worker has the right to go to a job free from exploitation, intimidation, and fear of retaliation. We actively monitor our job sites for quality, safety, and employer accountability for wage and benefit compliance. We believe in producing the highest skilled workers anywhere, which is why we spend close to $50,000 on each apprentice we train. We also provide additional classes for journey persons who wish to improve their skills and to train our newly organized members on any skills they might not have learned yet. By voting in favor of the CWTA, you're creating the opportunity for new apprentices to find a career path to the middle class and creating the opportunities for us to organize new members that are currently being exploited. We are at a time in history when 70% of workers favor unions. Please stand by working families and vote yes on the CWTA in your area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Robert Fong, followed by Todd Skiawo.
Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Rob Fong. Nobody calls me Robert Bobby. So I'm, I'm actually a member of Local 447, but you didn't know that. They actually have a special classification for people like me that don't own any tools. And Todd can explain how that works, but I'm here speaking on, in favor of the CWTA. I was actually one member of the negotiating team who got to work with your city staff, and I can tell you that it was a vigorous, rigorous process, and your staff, Jeff in particular, I think represented the city's interests very well. They were definitely kind of the hardest negotiations we've ever been through, but I think that, I think that's right for the City of Elk Grove. I think we have a really good agreement in front of you, and I think that, I just wanted to say that, you know, when you have public works projects, they're all prevailing wage jobs anyway, and so that's what union wages are, they're prevailing wages, and so, you know, it's hard for us to compete on the private jobs, because we do pay our workers more. We cost more, right? It's a living wage, it's a prevailing wage, there's benefits, there's pensions. We don't have to worry about that when it comes to public works projects, because it's a level playing field. You know, the law mandates that you all have to pay prevailing wage on that, and so that's really a great place for us to work, and, you know, for your city to kind of pass this, what you're really saying is you're taking your tax dollars and reinvesting it in your community, and the money's going to stay local, right? You've already heard from a number of people who live and want to work here, you know, it really does have a ripple effect, right? They're, they're your constituents, they're coaches, they're teachers, you know, they're homeowners. homeowners, they're shopping here local, and it's, it's an amazing investment, and with all of the things that your staff negotiated, the local hire, the job fairs, Jeff's right, we have a lot of work to do still to flesh out the workforce development, and we're absolutely going to do that. We have 180 days to, we'll get it done in 30, right? If, if you guys want to work during the holidays, and so, it, it's an amazing opportunity. You've heard from some of our veterans, we have helmets to hard hats. Our apprenticeship schools absolutely are, are doing outreach to women and minorities, and it, it's an amazing way to get people into what is still a middle-class career, right? And so with these, with these job hours, it allows us to keep our apprenticeship schools open, and it allows us to keep our workers working. And what a luxury for them, for those of them who work here, for them to be able to work on local projects and, and be home at night with their families. So, we're really excited about the opportunity. Thank you so much for bringing this to the city. You know, you get labor peace, and you also get a very skilled, trained workforce building your projects, and I, I know the casino was a private project, but it's, it's a great example that you guys all got to see firsthand, you know, with our skilled workers working on that, really delivered that project early.
Thank you, Rob.
So, thank you very much. Thank you, Mayor.
Next up is Todd Skiavo, followed by Larissa Petrucci.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Todd Skiavo, and I am Business Manager of UA Local 447 Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, and also the President of the Sacramento Sierra Building Trades Council. I am here tonight to speak in strong support of the citywide Community Workforce Training Agreement that is on the agenda tonight. You have heard from both sides and have heard a stark contrast of opinion. You have heard from those that are opposed that say the CWTA will deny prevailing wage opportunities to working families, veterans, and women. This couldn't be further from the truth. There is a similar agreement involving plumbers and pipe fitters that put three new female member women to work on a single project covered by an agreement within one week. Additionally, these types of agreements give us an opportunity to increase our already robust effort in reintegrating veterans back into civilian life, offer a career with living wage and benefits, and a variety of wraparound services to ease the transition into civilian career. If you want to look for some hard facts on how CWTA agreements would benefit the city, look no further than the Elk Grove Sky River Casino. This project was completed months ahead of schedule, which equated to the city gaining robust revenue months ahead of expectations, and the residents of Elk Grove were afforded much-needed employment opportunities months in advance of the original expectations. This is undisputable and a hard fact. In closing, I respectfully urge you to make a choice tonight, to make an investment in the city and its constituency to support hardworking local families that want to live and work in Elk Grove and do their part by being a partner in your choice to invest in them and the city. These families that I am speaking of represent the high propensity voters in Elk Grove that are counting on you. Thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next up is Larissa Petrucci, followed by John Rector.
Hi, my name is Dr. Larissa Petrucci. I'm with NorCal Construction Industry Compliance, which is a joint labor management committee organization. Thanks so much for hearing our comments today. I'm here to speak in favor of implementing a Community Workforce and Training Agreement here in Elk Grove, which I believe, based on the available research, will be beneficial to workers, businesses, and the community. The proposed CWTA will help to standardize high-quality construction across projects, ensuring that skilled and trained, trained workers who are experts of their crafts will be on these Elk Grove projects that will improve community infrastructure. As research shows, the CWTA will lead to high-quality work without added construction costs, despite what you might hear otherwise, or without negative outcomes to bid competition, which you can see in a recent study done by the University of California Berkeley Labor Center. In other words, the CWTA is a protection plan for taxpayers, assuring investment in high-quality infrastructure. The CWTA ensures a local pool of talented workers are hired on projects, and really, this is important right now during a skilled labor shortage, and, you know, a recent study shows that union contractors in particular have not had the problems fulfilling the workforce that non-union contractors have in this context of the labor shortage. I also want to highlight that, based on information on the California Public Works Online Database, in the last five years, over a third of union contractors in Elk Grove had projects that were completed early. You can find that for yourself on the PWC 100 if you'd like. I also found over 41% of union projects awarded to union contractors in Elk Grove over the last five years were completed early or within a month of the estimated completion date. If you also want to review the assessments against prevailing wage violations on the DIR, you'll find in the last two years, the only assessments made were to non-union contractors. National data shows the same trends. If you want to increase the chances that a job is staffed, that it's done right the first time, that it's completed on time, hiring union contractors will get you there. Thank you so much.
Larissa, what organization were you with?
It's called NorCal Construction Industry Compliance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up is John Rector, followed by Ronald Milner.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for hearing our time. My name is John Rector. I'm with the District Representative for the Operating Engineers Local 3. I'm a, an apprentice graduate, I'm a Marine Corps veteran, and I am a proud supporter of the CWTA. As a veteran, I returned home and struggled to transfer the skills and knowledge I received in the Marine Corps into a civilian career, until I discovered the Operating Engineers Apprenticeship Program. Like many in this room, the apprenticeship provided me with an opportunity to learn while I earned, and provided me with the skills to have a career, not just another job, and without raking up the thousands in debt. The proposed CWTA will provide all these same options, as well as good wages and fringe benefits to the local veterans and other skilled workers. CWTAs like this one provide options for individuals to work, live, and spend locally, supporting the community in multiple ways. In closing, I encourage this body to support this commu, uh, excuse me, to support your community by providing the proposed CWTA. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up, Ronald Milner, followed by Kevin Brom.
Good evening, City Council Mayor. My name is Ronald Milner. I am an ironworker, 118 Sacramento, proud 25 years. I've lived in Sacramento for 25 years, and I am now an instructor at the Iron Workers Apprenticeship Program on 51st Street in Sacramento. And I believe that ironworkers, union ironworkers, are the best welders in, you know, structural welders going. Highly trained, we're highly trained in all aspects of iron, okay? So, I just want to say that everybody else, what ahead of me has pretty much answered it, you know, what I had to say, but anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for your brevity. Next up is Kevin Brom, followed by Sal Rotolo.
To the mayor and to the distinguished council, my name is Kevin Brown. I am the Pre-Aprenticeship Director for the Sacramento Sierra Building Trades. And specifically what that is, is our pre-apprenticeship, that we have instructors at Consumus River, we have instructors at Hiram Johnson, soon to have an instructor at Rosemont High, Burbank, and also Highland Charter School. And so we have these pre-apprenticeship in the community to draw and build and develop a supply chain that's consistent with the CWTA. We use this model on the Golden One, we use this model also with the city of Sacramento. And so my role is to not only source, but to make certain that our affiliates are doing what we said we're going to do, and that is to recruit veterans, women, justice involved. I can throw you some numbers, in four years, it's been 400 people that have been transformed, that live in the most distressed zip codes in Sacramento. They also, half of that number came from the justice population. And so we are really super excited with regard to the possibility of a CWTA here in Elk Grove, because I really, from a personal experience, can tell you that CWTAs really help move the least of them that have been denied access for so long. So, I strongly encourage you for your consideration in a yes vote. Thank you.
Next up is Sal Rotolo, followed by Panzi Romo.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Sal Rotolo. I'm with Sheet Metal Workers Local 104. I'm the Assistant Business Manager and a resident of Elk Grove. I've been in Elk Grove for over 20 years. My kids went to Folks Ranch Elementary School. My daughter graduated from Franklin. My son graduated from Consumus. And actually, I want to commend the, the school district for their program over at Consumus. They have an academy, an architectural and design and engineering academy that my son was enrolled in, benefited him tremendously. He's now a fourth-year apprentice in Local 66 in Seattle, and he's doing great up there. But the thing is, having those skills and being exposed to the trades means very little if you don't have a good-paying job at the end of it, right? And that's, I think, the, the other piece of the puzzle that we need to kind of connect. CWTA will create opportunities for young people that are interested in the trades and create that avenue to also find the work, right? And to be able to work locally and to make a livable wage while they're going to school. You've heard that contractors will be excluded, which isn't true, right? It's just not true. There are plenty of PLAs that we have been signatory to where non-union have been on there. We've been to pre-jobs where non-union have been there. They can bid the work, they can use their core employees, and, and it's been, oddly enough, we end up signing a lot of those contractors. Once they see what we have to offer, often they will actually become signatory contractors. The acclaim of increased costs makes no sense either. Again, you've heard that these are all public works projects, they're all prevailing rate projects, right? So, being an ex-organizer, and I'm always an organizer, but it, it leads to suspicion, right? Because the only way that labor cost could go up is if somebody's cheating and not planning on paying the appropriate rate, right? Which happens all the time. You know, some good examples of, of PLAs, you've heard about it already, is the Sky River Casino, right? Early and under budget. So, there's a claim that out, out there that PLAs increase, or CWTAs increase, cost, but yet you have an example right down the street where actually it lowered the cost and was on time, actually, and actually early. Other examples of CWTAs are Sacramento City, SMUD, Sacramento School District, the city of Stockton, and Delta College. Elk Grove needs more middle-class-paying jobs, and this is just one piece of the puzzle, right? And it also provides the local hire, so our workers and our members don't have to drive to the Bay Area, they don't have to drive to Sacramento. Anytime you drive up by five, you know, five o'clock in the morning, you can see them all moving, right? This, this way we get to stay home and stay local. I hope and encourage that you vote for the CWTA.
Thank you. Next up is Panzi Romo, filed, followed by Doyle Radford.
Mayor, Council, thank you for your time tonight. My name is Panzi Romo. I am with Intech Mechanical, so I am a contractor. I'm not a union member, but I employ union members, and pretty much everyone has hit on everything that I would want to say tonight. I think with the exception of maybe underselling a little bit the best-in-class training that they receive and what the byproduct of that is. You know, people have talked about the differences between union and non-union, and all of the data kind of speaks for itself. I would just say that, you know, when we inhabit these buildings where we have systems and clean water and indoor air quality, the union members are responsible for the quality of those systems and how we feel when we inhabit the buildings and the projects that we send our kids and our families and our spouses to. So I would just encourage you to please vote yes on this agreement and continue to utilize union members to build your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Doyle Radford, followed by Tom Enslo.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Singh Allen and respected council. I am here to speak in favor of the CTWA tonight. Labor's Local 185, my name is Doyle Radford Jr., and I am the Business Manager of that union, and I have the distinct honor of representing over 5,700 men and women throughout a 20-county region. Right here in Elk Grove, we have 175 working men and women who have families that rely on them to make a living. And this is a big thing for them, to be able to work here locally, to come home at night and watch their kids play ball, to coach, a lot of them coach. We sponsor those teams. I've heard a lot said tonight, so I don't want to be redundant, but you heard about the Sky River Casino, we got to build that. That was really nice to stay close to home, got to walk that project with some locals. Our local also built the Grantline Capital Southeast Connector. We were on that. And then Nicole actually covered probably about two-thirds of her projects, including the SMUD Powerhouse Science Center that Allen was on, he's here with us tonight. We built most of those projects, so building local means a lot, and I wanted to commend staff, I don't think staff gets enough credit. They did a terrific job, given a non-biased, really, assessment of what this means, and you heard it right, there's buy-in for the local community. We're going to host job fairs, we want your sons, your daughters, and we are your mothers and fathers and neighbors, and we want to grow this community right, and we want to build it right with good middle-class jobs. So, I want to thank you for your time and urge you to vote yes on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Tom Enslo, followed by Ian Vander Linden.
Good evening, Tom Enslo. I'm the Attorney for the Sacramento Sierra Building and Construction Trades Council. I'd like to first start off by thanking Jeff Werner and the rest of the staff for working with us and negotiating the terms. This was over a year process, you know, we, you know, we provided a lot of concessions, but we think this is the right agreement to start out for in Elk Grove. I submitted a letter to the city council last Friday that provides some background on the CWTAs and, and cites the studies that have been done that really rebut the opposition you've heard. These studies show that PLAs do not increase costs, they do not significantly reduce bidders, that non-union bidders do bid on these projects, and, you know, there, there were some reports of, of some projects where 50% of the contractors were non-union bidders, and that, you know, this does, you know, create benefit and, and make projects come in town in, in time, which is why CWTAs are continually re-adopted by cities and are being adopted by more cities and more public agencies around California and around the region. I'd like to, you know, briefly just address the issue that was brought up regarding wage and benefit packages. You know, the, the CWTA requires the same wage and benefit packages to apply to all workers, whether you're union or non-union, and that includes contributions, you know, toward those benefits. Core workers do vest and can vest in this. These are big projects. We're talking million-dollar projects, it'll be one, two years to build. For health benefits, it's two to three months to vest, so for the vast majority of these projects, these workers will be able to get union-level family benefit healthcare that they would not otherwise have access to. These benefits, these pension accruing travels from project to project, you can go five years without doing another CWTA, and you'll still carry what you've accrued. And so, what's, why that's important, you know, is my firm's negotiated dozens and dozens of these public CWTAs, and they all have these same wage and benefit provisions, and that's important, especially in the region, because as a core worker is working under the city of Sacramento, a CWTA, he's accruing, you know, pension benefits. When he works under the Elk Grove CWTA, he accrues more. If they're not consistent, they're not uniform, then, you know, that makes, that whole process fall apart. So, there is a benefit to the coworkers there. They are actually still taking more take-home pay than the union members because the coworkers do not have to pay union benefits, they do not have to pay, I'm sorry, union dues, you don't have to, have to pay working dues, and those union dues are what are paying for the job fares, the local hire costs, all, all the other benefits you're going to get out of this, that's all being paid for by the union members only. So, the, the, these coworkers are getting somewhat of a free ride.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next up is Ian Vander Linden, followed by David Vincent.
All right. I apologize if I stumble, this is my first time doing this. I'm not, I'm not a professional like a lot of the counterparts here in this room. My name is Ian Vander Linden, I'm with KS Telecom. I'm a part-owner in a small telecommunications company here in town. We've done work in Elk Grove for over 25 years. We've built and worked on a ton of your schools, and what they're telling you is false. If they put this PLA in place, the CWTA is as it's disguised, then it means that we can't work on your project. It's the same thing as saying that, that you guys picked up and you guys were just going to toss in a vote, and then they said that you, you, and you aren't on that panel, and you, you, you have to step in and make that decision. And that's what you're signing up for, you're telling me that I have to take off half of my people and I can only have five people. my people, and I can only have five people on it, instead of me using my entire crew that we've grown and built through the apprenticeship program, through time invested. I wrote down a whole thing, I emailed you guys this morning when I couldn't sleep over this. I heard inclusion, same as other people tonight, this is blatant exclusion. It tells us that we can't do work in your, in your city. Tells us that my guys can't work in your city, all my guys are local. My guys for here, Sarin bought a home in your city, working for us, and he's been working for us for a long time, he came through the apprenticeship program, some that, an apprenticeship program that stayed approved, same as the unions. So, your library job that was $4.4 million, it'd probably be $5.5 million on this PLA, the CWTA. So, it's, I don't, I don't know how they can come up with the numbers, I honestly don't. It's, I mean, it's telling 80% of the workforce they can't work and bid on your jobs, 80% of those companies, any of your, the family members, the people that donate time to the communities as well. I donate plenty of time, all my guys donate plenty of time, their coaches, their fathers, their mothers, same as everybody else in this room. Like, we're all vested in our communities, we all sponsor teams, we all give a lot back, we go through the same apprenticeships and do, follow the same standards, we're skilled and trained. We have good, quality people, we pay same prevailing wage rates. I had a ton of notes. We have veterans, there's veterans on both sides. The only thing that's different with this PLA, CWTA, is that the veterans on the non-union side, which is 80% of the workforce, will be discriminated against. I didn't know if I'd get to it or not, but I have friends on both sides, we do work for union and non-union. I have one friend that was with a union contractor, and one day I was having a conversation, and he was laughing with me, and I just couldn't figure out why he was laughing, and finally stopped laughing, and he explained it. He said that they had a PLA job that nobody else bid, and he didn't have time to bid it, they didn't want to bid it, they didn't have enough time to do the job, but nobody else was bidding it. So he took his high number, tripled it, submitted it, and a month later, when I'm talking to him on the phone, you got the work, so...
Thank you for your comments.
In a time of...
Can you raise your hand if you're with Ian Van der Linden, so that, in case you're not speaking? Okay, thank you. All right, next up, we have David Vincent, followed by Matt Newton Boom.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name's David Vincent, and I work for, as the compliance representative for the Sheet Metal Workers Local Union Number 104, and I'm speaking in support of the motion. My job is to ensure that both public and private jobs within the area are free from waste, fraud, and unsafe working conditions, or what some would like to call the underground economy. The preponderance of the state's underground economy weakens critical state programs, creates a disadvantage for compliant businesses, puts workers at risk, and affects us all as consumers. In 2014, the state's Department of Industrial Relations did a survey on this underground economy, and estimated that between $9 and $28 billion was being lost to wage theft, insurance fraud, and lost sales tax revenue as a result of the underground economy. Most often times, the victims of this wage theft are women, immigrants, and people of color. And the most common industries in the state for wage theft are hospitality, garment business, and construction. In addition to the protections that the Public Works Director earlier addressed of the CWTA, utilizing this agreement also creates a level playing field where all contractors, regardless of their status as a union or non-union contractor, will be abiding by the same sets of rules, and the risk of worker misclassification and underpayment is severely minimized. Contractors who are properly compliant with local, state, and federal requirements are all eligible to compete. The contractors that can play by these rules and build the project as specified at the lowest possible cost are then awarded these projects, simple as that. Lastly, I wanted to mention my appreciation for the training portion of the city's CWTA. The Berkeley Labor Center, as was mentioned earlier by a number of speakers, mentions that apprenticeship programs, regardless of the specialty, add an average of $400,000 to an apprentice's lifetime earnings. It's an excellent alternative to post-secondary education for tens of thousands of Californians. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Next up is Matt Newton Boom, followed by Gina White.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. First of all, thank you for your public service, I know this is a long night, I'm going to try and be brief. I am a homeowner in Elk Grove, I bought my house in Laguna Ridge in 2008. I'm also a member of Local 340, I'm an electrician by trade. In 2004, I was a young man searching for my path in life, and I found my way to the union apprenticeship program, not even knowing what I was getting into. In five short years, through my apprenticeship program and some hard work, my family was turned into an upper-middle-class income earner. My wife was able to stay home, and I bought my beautiful home in Elk Grove. It's not just that, though, the story of these jobs is not just the creation of jobs, but it's also wage stabilization. In 2010, the unemployment in the construction sector was unprecedented, and non-signatory competition was paying wages that just weren't living, just were not. I remember one employer, who I'm not going to mention, had an ad out for a journeyman electrician, journeyman level, for $13 an hour. Meanwhile, anybody who was working under a signatory agreement like myself maintained our wages at close to $30 an hour at that time. That's the reason why I'm still a homeowner in Elk Grove. I would have lost my house, I would have lost my house, and who knows what else. So this isn't just creation of jobs, this is a creation of stable, working class in this community. I urge you to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Gina White, followed by Vance Jared.
Hello and good evening, my name is Gina White. I urge you to support the CWTA. I am a second-year union electrician apprentice with the IBW Local 340. I'm grateful for my union, because this will allow my husband and I to ascend to the middle class. When I first became interested in the building trades, I went to some non-union contractors, and no one would hire me because I had no construction experience. And then I found the union apprenticeship, I took the test, I sat for an interview, and then I was on the waiting list. When it was my turn, I was in, it didn't matter that I didn't have any construction experience. I really appreciate my union for the nondiscriminatory hiring process, and that they're willing to train people without construction experience. It's really valuable to those of us who don't have another way in, so, thank you, I urge you to support this.
Thank you. Next up is Vance Jared, followed by Noah Painter.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Vance Jared with the North State Building Industry Association. I'll be as brief as possible, as I know you've all received a letter from us outlining our concerns with this agreement before you. Put simply, as the staff analysis points out, entering into this agreement will result in higher project planning and construction costs. As members of the housing industry are responsible to pay the fees that fund many of these projects, we are concerned that this, these cost increases will result in higher fees, which ultimately translates into higher costs of housing. For that reason, we request that you do not approve this agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Noah Painter, followed by Rashid Siddiqui.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council, Noah Painter, third-generation IBW member. I got the IBW membership, kind of like Rob has the plumbers and pipe fitters. I focus on public policy issues for the local, this is, this is really a public policy discussion, right? What we're focused on tonight is, how is the city going to decide to invest tax dollars, and whether they put that forward and invest it in local hiring policies like is before you today? You know, really, the challenge is, and what we hear from various people that oppose this, is, you know, this is wage theft, this is potentially an issue, this is anti-competitive, this isn't that at all. This is a policy decision on where do you want to spend your tax dollars, and whether or not you want to see people that live in your community work on public works projects, and make a standard living that they can afford to continue to live here, and have a stable wage and a stable life. Ultimately, you've heard from both sides, so I don't want to be overly redundant, but this is good public policy, this is going to continue to be adopted in places like California, and hopefully get adopted throughout other, other states. Ultimately, you'll be on the right side of history for voting yes on this. I'm really disappointed to see that the BIA was opposed to this, because we do have a great working partnership with them on various issues, hopefully we'll be able to resolve that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Rashid Siddiqui, and after that is Jesus Campos.
How you doing, Mayor and Council? I'm actually here to speak on behalf of the training portion of this. 2013, I was the vice president of the Greater Sacramento Urban League, and we were charged to train and, well, find about 70 workers, men and women, throughout these hard-to-serve communities, and we had designated zip codes that we recruited from. And so, we were able to play 70 hard-working, young people, some people looking for a new opportunity, some have went astray, some were laid off and looking for a new career. We were able to change lives with our agreement. We were able to make an impact on these hard-to-serve communities that they had never seen before, and also, kind of bring a little bit more diversity to this work group at the Golden One Arena. And not only the 70 people that we found for the Golden One Arena, but we found another 70 that we were able to place at other projects outside of Sacramento. So it was a gift that kept giving. And so, I just want to encourage the council and the mayor to say yes to this agreement, because this is a life-changing agreement for folks who are able to benefit. And I'm still have folks coming to me today thanking me for the opportunity that was provided for them during that time of 2013. It was able, I hear people talking about purchasing homes and, and being able to take care of their families, that's what this agreement does. It gives the opportunity to men and women who may not have the opportunity to get in in any other way. And so, I was able to continue this partnership, even today, this, the union, all these guys behind me have also helped me in the community of Sacramento, even as the volunteers. When I needed them to help with elders in their homes, they showed up. So, the partnership and the friendship with the union, I will encourage you to do so. And thank you, Rashid Siddique, and I'm with the lift-up love always now, and I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Jesus Campos, followed by Manuel Zapata.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Jesus Campos, I am in ABC Norcal, I'm a fourth-year apprentice carpenter with them. Before ABC was non-union, I really had no idea what the difference was, now I do after four years. With ABC, I've worked locally in Elk Grove, I worked at Laguna Creek High School, I built their green building site, and then, but that was a year ago. Because Sacramento voted on passing this WCTA, I no longer have local work in Sacramento, I commute at least an hour and a half every day, back and forth, two hours, three hours, you know, that, that to me isn't the norm now, it shouldn't be the norm, you know, that's where I'm at. It does not work, it, it, it just doesn't, so, thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jesus. Next up is Manuel Zapata, maybe it's Manuel, I'm sure I'll be corrected, followed by Kevin
Either one is fine, just not Manny. So, thank you for, for hearing us out today. Oh, the timer's right there, okay. So my name is Manuel Zapata, I am with the Sheet Metal Workers Local Union Number 104, I am the communications coordinator. First, I just want to thank everybody for showing up today, because a lot of people here worked really hard today, stood up to what right now is not too late for us, but very late for them, they have to get up to a long day tomorrow and go right back to work, but they're here because they're fighting for what they believe in, and that it's this community. As the communications coordinator, I have the privilege of traveling across Local 104's jurisdiction, and I get to meet with the apprentices, meet with the journey persons, I get to hear their stories, and I get to tell their tales in our newsletter and beyond. I will just say that no matter where I've been, the truth remains the same, that people just want to provide for their families, they want to earn a livable wage, and they want to work in their communities to maximize the time they get to spend with their families. You know, in the new hire section earlier in today's meeting so long ago, I saw the pride in the council's eyes, when they got to speak to a young lady, I believe her name was Jenny, about coming back to the community and doing good work within the community, and I couldn't help but to turn in my speaker card, so I could talk about the opportunities on the table, to get these hard-working men and women to be able to come here and work, to stay here and work, and not have to commute. Like I said, a lot of them are up here when they should be winding down with their families, but they know the importance of this agreement, they know the importance of this policy. No, we don't all get paid to travel around the state to bad-mouth progress, we don't all have bling-bling wristbands when we walk up here, but these are hard-working men and women that want to buy a house here, they want to provide for their families, and they're going to do what it takes to be able to encourage you guys to stand with progress, stand on the right side of history, and to stand with the workers, and to pass this CWTA for everybody in the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Ferreira.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name's Kevin Ferreira, I'm the executive director of the Sacramento Sierras Building and Construction Trades Council. You know, what more can you say, everything has been said. So I will share my life experience. I too, come from the Marine Corps, and those who know me know that my job in the Marines, I was a scout sniper, of which I was an A student in, you know, assassination. And so, so...
I don't know if I feel scared or safe.
So what do you do with that when you, when you separate? And so...
That's a good lead-in.
So, I, I became an ironworker, and, but I started out in the non-union world as an ironworker, and, and I can tell you that all things aren't good. I have worked on prevailing wage job as a non-union ironworker, and experienced misclassification and having less money on my check. The health benefits, a month before my daughter was born, the company renegotiated our medical benefits, dropped maternity, so I had to pay cash for my daughter to be born upfront. And so, I know how much that is. And because she costs a lot of money, I love her a lot. And, you know, and so, but, you know, since becoming a union ironworker, I can tell you the skillsets are not the same. We have experienced journey-level informants from non-union sector who can't keep up with our apprentices out in the field. And that's what it was like for me when I came over. And so, the skillsets are not the same, the training is second to none, the health benefits are second to none. I add my wife and my daughter to my health plan without added cost to add them to my health plan, that, that stuff is free, before I had to pay to add them to my plan. And so, life has been really good for me as a union ironworker. It's been the best decision I made since the Marine Corps, you know, and so, it's allowed my family, for us to live on a single-family income. I bought a house, it's almost paid for, and so, I'm real happy about that. I paid for my daughter to go to college, she has a master's degree now. Life is good, and so, and it's all because of being a union ironworker, being in the trades. You know, my story is not unique, any other craft member will experience the same thing. And so, I implore the council to lift the workers up, to live lives with integrity and dignity and self-sufficiency. Thank you for your support.
Thank you for your comments. All right. Thank you, everyone. At this time, I'm going to close the public comment opportunity, and I really want to thank everyone that spoke. You were all very professional, and showed courtesy to one another, so thank you. At this time, I'm going to take about a four-to-five-minute comfort break before we begin our deliberations. I know I need to use the restroom, and I imagine my colleagues might as well, and it allows you all to maybe go grab some water or use the restroom. We'll resume in five minutes, thank you.
We have to make sure that the two go back at a time.
Yeah, two at a time? All right, if I can get everyone to take their seats and settle down, so we can get started. so we can get started. Thank you, everyone. And if you still have interesting conversations, we invite you to go to our hallway. All right, I want to thank again all of our speakers and staff. And we'll just go down and deliberations with, I'll start with my colleagues here. I'll start to my right with Councilmember Nguyen.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. So I, I too want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. And I agree, you started your morning real early. So this is really late for you. I'm sure you've got to get up in the next couple of hours or so. Really appreciate you coming out and sharing your experience, your thoughts, your support, or where you're at on this. And, you know, to my surprise, and I want to thank Mr. Jeff Warner for giving us the history, because I was here in 2018 when this came up. But I had no idea that this came up also in 2013, and again in 2014. And so, it seems like we've been trying to figure out a way to make this work. And I'll tell you, all of your stories touch me. But the one that really reminded me of this work is when Mr., what is his name now? Oh, Rashid Siddique. So, he talked about how he was with Urban League in 2014, and this is on the G1C contract. And as somebody who runs a nonprofit organization that is a workforce development organization, I also run the Job Center that serves the Oak Park community. So he reminded me about the zip codes. And the zip codes that we really targeted the communities that were low-income and disenfranchised communities, where we tried to get them into good-paying jobs. And the amount of people that came through our doors wanting to get an opportunity to work for a union shop. And the fact that when this came up at the city of Sacramento, before I was even here on the Elk Grove City Council, that I was there. I was there, and as a matter of fact, I tried to get in. There were way too many people, not only in the room, but also in the waiting area as well, all the way out onto the door just to speak about this. And that I had to make some special phone calls to a Councilmember named Rob Fong to get me through the door so that I can speak. I had a couple of staff members with me, and we were able to sneak them in there just to give our point of view as employment service specialists and trying to get folks into jobs. And we supported it back then. Before I was on Council, I supported that CWTA. And it was a huge part because of the G1C and the fact that we were able to get hundreds of people jobs, good-paying jobs, so they can be able to afford to buy a house, put their kids through college and whatnot. So everything you said really spoke to me, because this is the work that I do every day where I get people into jobs. And I can tell you now, at our Oak Park office, we do have folks that are coming in right now. And there is a shortage in the, in the construction and looking for a skilled workforce in that area, and that folks are asking for an opportunity to work for a union shop, because they understand how it's going to be beneficial to them and their family, and also be able to one day own a home. What I'm also pleased to also hear, though, is that this came up back in 2013. So back when, when I was at the CWTA, G1C in the city of Sacramento, you know, looking to support this, and that we haven't been able to figure something out here yet. But finally, to hear that our staff has been able to sit down with many of you and figure out a way in which it would work best for our city, and that it would support many of the community members that, that I work with on a daily basis. We're talking about vets, emancipated youth, foster youth, folks receiving public assistance, all of those areas in which we really need to pull them in closer to try to help lift them up. And so, for that reason, I am in support of this CWTA. And I'd be more than happy to make that first motion, because I think it's, it's time. It's been since 2013. And before I leave this Council, I want to see this happen here for our city. There are many of you that live here in the city of Elk Grove, and I'm really appreciative that you came out, because that tells me that you're right. You want to work here, you want to live here, and you want to shop here. And that means everything to me as a Councilmember here in the city of Elk Grove before I, I leave my, my seat here. So, I'll stop there.
Thank you. Councilmember Spees.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, you know, for several years, you know, I've had the opportunity to meet with Doyle Radford of Laborer's Local 185. And I want to, I want to be sure that I tell Doyle thank you very much for, for giving me education, helping me understand, helping me understand things. As well as Kevin Ferreira, I really appreciate you, you know, letting me, helping me understand about what PLAs and CWTAs are. I've also met with Richard Markson over the last few years from WECA. And of course, N'Gol Garing from ABC NorCal. And what I've promised to each of them is three things. An open door, an open mind, and a commitment to a level playing field for all Elk Grove workers. So today, I'm asking my Council colleagues to help me get to yes. This is a good start. This is a good direction. There are five things that I would like to see added, and I'm happy to bring them up right now. The first is, under major projects, it's currently defined as $1 million. I don't mean to be glib about it, but you can't build a toilet in San Francisco for less than $1 million. I think to say that a large project is $1 million is difficult. I think it should be raised to $10 million. The next item is in paragraph 2.4. In the event that the city receives less than three bids on a major project, the city will rebid the major project, and the PLA will not apply to the rebid. The next one, a local hire who is not a part of the union shall not have the CWTA applied to them. And I think this, no, I got two more. Notwithstanding the above, this is addition of paragraph 11.6. Notwithstanding the above, any contractor who is not part of a union can pay the equivalent benefits listed in Article 11 of the employee using their own benefits plan, should such equivalent benefits be paid. The contractor will be exempt from complying with this article. And the last one would be the length. The, the agreement shall remain in full force and effect for a period of three years from the date. That's a change from five. So, my hope is that I can get to yes. This isn't bad. It just needs some changes. And I'm hoping that my Council colleagues will support that tonight.
Hey, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. I, if the Council is unwilling to, to add these tonight, I'm certainly happy to carry on the conversation. This isn't, for me, this is not a closed door. Let's continue the conversation. If we can't get to those five, then I would have to be a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you for your thoughtful comments. So as we go on in the deliberation process, I just, I appreciate, I think, given where staff is, you know, we've been at this since 2013, I'm only interested from my, at least from my point of view of what we have in front of us, rather than trying to negotiate something from the dais.
I appreciate that, Madam Mayor, but this is my first opportunity
I appreciate that.
to speak on this item. And I will be on record for it, and I appreciate it. But I, it had to be said.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So going along in the deliberations, I'll, Councilmember Vice Mayor Swin.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So first, I have a question for Jason. The comment was made earlier this evening from the BIA. And I just wanted to clarify on, you know, this, this agreement definitely applies to work that's bid by the city. But can you maybe talk about how it would affect private sector work?
The CWTA doesn't, doesn't apply to private sector work.
Okay. Yeah. So the, maybe elaborate a little bit more, because of the...
On the, on the question of fees and impacts there.
Impact fees, yeah, yeah.
So, first of all, the city of Elk Grove is committed to our fees being very competitive in, in the region. You know, the fees go to improvements in our community to mitigate the impacts of new development. And so, it's, it's, the, the work is extremely important. But as was previously mentioned, the CWTA doesn't change the fact that projects are required to pay prevailing wage. It's unclear at this point whether there will be any cost impacts of the CWTA. We're going to monitor the results closely. There's a term on this, this agreement. The, the trades have committed to helping the city in the event that there are any issues or impacts with a competitive bidding environment. From what we've, we understand, kind of our experience and discussions with other agencies, we still, we still expect a very competitive bidding environment. And so, but we were going to monitor that and see where we are. And again, I think the city's commitment is to make sure that we maintain competitive fees with no impact to those as a result of this agreement tonight.
Yeah. And so, when private sectors bidding it does not, does not apply, this, this document.
Yeah. So if it's a, if it's a private, private construction contract, does not apply. If it's a city-led project that ultimately is funded by development impact fees, it would apply with or without really development impact fees.
Right. City bid, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Only for city bid projects.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Just wanted to clarify that. You know, I, I mean, you know, and I, I think in the private sector, you know, actually, before that, I want to back up for a second and also give my thanks for all of you to come out tonight and stay late. And you know, why this decision is so important to me is that after all of you leave the job site, a lot of you are Elk Grove residents, right? No matter what side you're on. And so, I, we represent all of you. And so, we know this, this document impacts lives. And so, it's, it's important to me. And so, I'm, I've done everything I can to research, to talk to all of you, and, and look at things through, you know, all kinds of lenses, including my own. And if you'll indulge me here for just a minute, I, you know, private sector work, of what I started off saying was, you take that risk, and you, you should achieve, you know, sky's the limit. I think that's what we're built on. Capitalism, we're, we're built on that. But you know, having spent both my, half my life in private and public sector, you know, one thing I've learned in the public sector is that we go to work as public servants, and we're not, we're not going after, you know, big bonuses. We're not going after sky's the limit. We're doing our job, and we just want to be able to take care of our families and, and earn a decent wage in, in retirement and, and healthcare, and taking care, take care of our families and ourselves. So, there, there's a difference to me. And when you have public sector work, these are, the, when we pay employees, I think the public sees that as an extension of the city. And so, by virtue of that, I think there's, there's an expectation that we're taking care of the employees, the people that are doing, doing that work. And I think if I, you know, if I'm not mistaken, I think I'm the only one up here who is a member of a union, who at this point in time in his life is, is earning a pension. And so, I know the value of that. I know the value of also, you know, working in, in the private sector and, and taking that risk as well. And so, when I started my career, you know, when I, I had a, I had a stint in, in, in the state, and I thought, I decided to leave, and I thought I'd never come back. And of course, my father, who worked, worked for the, for the government, retired after 30 years with the county, you know, he, he said, "You got to stay. Stay and get vested, you know, before you leave." And so, I listened, you know. And 20 years later, I can tell you, boy, am I glad I stayed. And that, that vesting, you know, was a great benefit to me personally that I, that I got that vesting. So, the reason why I say that is because I know it's a, it's an issue about paying into something that, where you're not vested, and you may, you may lose that vesting. But I wouldn't, I wouldn't bet on it. You know, nobody's lives are, are for certain. And so, you could actually make a big difference to somebody who, you know, started vesting and later on in their, in their lives, decided that work was for them. And so, I think, Councilmember Spees, I appreciate the points that you brought up. And I, I've looked at this agreement every which way and sideways. And then I want to take the moment to thank staff for all the work that they did. They put a ton of research into this as well, and I think negotiated as hard as they could. But I don't think anything on here for me is, is going to change the fact that I don't think we can dispute the, the level of benefits that the, the, the union shops would, would provide in terms of retirement and healthcare. And I think what we're doing is we're setting a standard for those, for anybody who does work for the city. And I'm looking at all city staff, any of our police officers, firefighters, school district, you know, anybody who's in public service. I think it's a normal thing. And so, again, you're doing work for the city. You're an extension of that city. And if, you know, for something like this, public sector work bid by, by the city, not private sector work, I think it's fair to expect that these benefits are commensurate with that. And so, that's why I, I'm willing to support this document tonight. I'm happy to second Councilmember Nguyen's motion to...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Continuing on, sorry, continuing on with deliberations, Councilmember Hume.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to echo Manuel and thank everyone that has already put in a long day of work and still out here taking time away from your family. Means a lot. And so, thank you for doing that. And I want to thank Osman, and Robert, and John, and Kevin. And when Kevin mentioned Marines, I heard at least one more ooh-rah from over in this part of the room. So I want to thank all the veterans that served out there as the son of a veteran that died in the line of duty. It means a lot to me as well. And I, I just want to thank all of you for being involved in the trades. I am a firm believer in dirty hands and clean money. I, you know, I think it's a, it's a travesty that we are not shouting from the rooftops to our school-age kids that there is a viable career out there that does not involve going to college. And then, in fact, your friends that go to college are probably going to come out in debt, whereas you're going to be making a good living and, and able to support a family. And so, we need to change the narrative on that. We need to make it so people don't look down their nose at honest work. And there's a lot in this agreement that I, that I support. I support the helmets to hard hats. I support the, the apprenticeship program, making sure that our craftsmen are, are trained so that we're, we're getting the best work in a safe work environment and, and a quality job. I sat on the, the, the CWTA ad hoc committee. And we negotiated, you know, I don't even know how long it was. Couple of years, it felt like. And, and then, for whatever reason, that effort fell apart. And, but, you know, we were negotiating in good faith, and I think there were some, some stumbling blocks along the way. But you know, there's a lot in this agreement that I support. I support, as I said, the, the veterans, the underserved communities, local hire. There's one sticking point, though, that was a deal breaker from day one on that committee. And that's the unfortunate thing, is when I was able to sit at the table and be a part of the negotiating and roll up the sleeves and do the work, is able to understand it, able to work through it. And unfortunately, now, I've got a, a situation where staff has gone out and done the negotiating and come forward with something to, to give a thumbs up or thumbs-down vote to. And so, the, the idea of paying into the pension plan, I, I don't see how that benefits the job. I don't see how that benefits the taxpayers, and I don't see how that benefits the worker. Because unless that worker does more union work or joins the union after that job, they never vest and get that money. And, and that's just, that's patently unfair to me. And so, I've always been about trying to create a level playing field. I'm not pro-union or anti-union. I am pro-work. I want to have so much work out there. I want to create an environment where, where jobs just break loose. And as somebody said, people have to turn down bids because they don't even want to try and take it on. And so, I can't, I can't vote for this agreement because of that one provision, but I don't want to vote against it either, because we're so close. But if this is an up or down vote tonight, I don't want to cast a pall over somebody who's going to be filling this seat in, within three meetings from now for the first time in 16 years. And so, if, if we have to go to a vote, I'm, I'm going to abstain, because I, I can't vote for it, and I don't want to vote against it. So, that might be the first time in my 22-year career that I've taken that position, but that's where I'm at. I feel like we're too close. So, that's it.
Thank you. Thank you to my colleagues for your very, very thoughtful comments. And thank all of you, truly. One, you coming out in just strong numbers, hearing from both sides. I take this job very seriously. I've met with pretty much every stakeholder. I've met with ABC and probably 10 others in, in the meeting with Nicole. I've met with all of the, the signatory unions for the most part. I've done my due diligence.[1795.81] I've done my due diligence and I've been researching this issue for a few years. This is not my first go-around. We've had similar, although it wasn't a CWTA, it was pre-qualification language while I was a school board trustee. And I know how emotionally charged this can be. And so for me, I really wanted to put aside all of the fact sheets that I got from different sides and do some of my own homework and research. And I came back with really almost always this coming back to the same conclusions. And so I've jotted down a number of notes and I actually took notes from every single speaker in case I missed anything in my own deliberations because I do take this so seriously. From what I have seen from my own homework, but also from information that's been presented, but really a lot of my own research. The CWTA will ensure efficient project management of large-scale public works while also ensuring these projects maximize local economic employment benefits, including apprentice shift opportunities for minorities, women, and veterans. That came up time and time again. We heard this evening from a number of these individuals. You know, we pride ourselves as a city that we want to have a community where you can truly live, work, shop, and play. And our community is getting more expensive. That's not lost on any of us. And to have a robust middle class where you can invest in our community and enjoy those opportunities, that is very meaningful to me, not only as a mayor, but as a former school board member. Those career and technical education opportunities are so important. COVID was a teaching point for so many of us. It was also a wake-up call of not just creating jobs, but creating careers. Careers where you can retire with a pension and benefits. That came up time and time again in my research and that is hard to ignore. We do such a great job in the city of Elk Grove to recruit and retain great talent. We saw some of our new hires and promotions earlier this evening. But for us to be competitive and really recruit the best and the brightest, we invest in our employees. By way of extension, and I think our vice mayor also mentioned to that effect, we also want to raise the bar for those that do work with the city of Elk Grove. We have, we should have that expectation that if you're doing work for the city, that we have that same expectation of our contractors. But there were some points raised here and all of my research really discredits this assumption that the cost will increase. A lot of assumptions made on that notion because it's just, it's an arbitrary comment. The research that I've seen and looking right here in our own backyard with the casino project where we were under budget so much earlier, so that put people to work immediately, that is something that right here in our backyard, we can and should look to. But some of these arbitrary concerns, I have not seen tangible data to support that. I've seen allegations, but I look to as much as one can to non-biased research. And I have found that through several universities that publish data and it's all publicly available. So I'm very skeptical when cost increases are used as a tool for cities to not consider these agreements. Because if they were so detrimental and so bad, we wouldn't be seeing a rise in CWTA's. At the end of the day, these actually are great tools that can be used for cities when it comes to these kinds of contracts. Other points that were raised that I think are very important to reemphasize, that the agreement allows for the use of core workers of a non-union contractor and that the CWTA is limited in scope for that $1 million threshold. Most city projects are under, under that $1 million threshold. So this is truly about those large-scale projects. And I commend our staff, particularly Mr. Werner, for negotiating that component because that is something that is very important for the city of Elk Grove. So I want to commend staff for these very vigorous negotiations, for coming up with a pragmatic, moderate solution from other cities. So thank you, sir, for all of your hard work and time that you have spent on this. I also want to comment that there will be plenty of work for local non-union contractors and their employees, both under the CWTA and on projects not covered by the CWTA. That is still very important to remember. But I think what compelled me most were all of you that came tonight that live right here in our city. I hear you. I see you. Your stories moved me where I had an idea that I would come here and be supportive, but you, your stories specifically, coming here and sharing those, that was invaluable. Because I know how hard you all work for your families, but you're investing here in our community. You want to live, work, shop, and play in Elk Grove. And I take that very seriously. My most favorite component is that CWTA's keep local dollars in Elk Grove. We heard earlier from Explore Elk Grove about keeping those dollars local, why buying local is so important for us. Along those same lines, I see the same arguments here for this agreement. I also support the CWTA because its local hire requirement. This means millions more of tax dollars that are spent on construction wages are put back to work in the local economy, in our area, in our city. Each dollar paid in prevailing wages to construction workers produces about $1.50 in economic activity. We want that work activity to occur here, not in communities outside of our work area. In addition, the CWTA's partnership with local apprenticeship programs supports the creation of the local middle-class jobs that boost consumer spending, that boost consumer spending, which creates additional jobs across all sectors of our local economy. So hearing all of you and appreciating all of the work that has taken years in the making, this is years in the making, several city councils, but we are here tonight with the great work of everyone on the negotiating table. Thank you, thank you. And thank you to everyone, even our non-union workers and contractors. We thank you for the work that you do in our community. We thank you. So with that, I am also in support and we will take a roll call vote.
So with the motion and the second, that's for the resolution of the staff recommendation, which is without any changes for the roll call vote. I'll be starting with Councilmember Wynn.
Aye.
Councilmember Spees.
Regrettably, no.
Councilmember Hume.
Abstain.
Vice Mayor Swin.
Aye.
And Mayor Singh Allen.
Aye.
It'll be three a.m.
We're on our last item, so if we can just, maybe just bear with us. We are looking for council reports. Any reports from Councilmember Wynn?
Oh, just that I want to thank our chief of police for speaking. We had a graduation tonight for our Links to Law Enforcement program. We've spoken about it many times where Asian Resources, Urban League, and Law Familia comes together and works with our local law enforcement agencies to try to recruit from different communities into law enforcement, into the careers of law enforcement. And tonight was graduation and tonight, our very own chief of police, Bobby Davis, spoke. It was held at District 56. So as soon as he spoke, he was the keynote speaker. He came running over here and I heard some great remarks about what he had to say and how much they enjoyed it. And I think, I don't know if we congratulated
If we can take the comments outside, please. We're still wrapping up city business. Thank you, everyone.
I don't know if we congratulated or not, but our very own council member, Kevin Spees, became a grandfather.
Yes, congratulations.
Yes.
Haven't done that, yes.
That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Just one quick thing. At our last meeting, I had asked for us to have a conversation with UPRR about the railroad. Not anything to report yet, but what I do want you to know is that a representative from Union Pacific Railroad has been in contact with the city. They actually contacted us before we got to them. Our first meeting is tomorrow and we'll have the police department as well as CSD Fire and of course, you know, city leadership there to just, to talk about it. And while there's nothing to report on it yet, I think it's important to note that they were proactive in coming to us and they're trying to, they want to work with us. So, you know, sometimes when we think that things can't happen, they do. So anyway, just wanted to bring that up. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor Singh.
I'll waive my report. Thank you.
Councilmember Hume.
No report.
And I will waive my report. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting at 9:18. Thank you, everyone, for your time.